What we have this evening is a budget work session. We have a number of items that we'll be going through, but first I wanted to see if there's any council comments before we begin. Any council comments? Any public comments? We're a little limited on public this evening. So we will move right into the budget work session, which we will begin with a discussion of general government.
I'll just make some introductory comments. As the agenda cover sheet indicates, the proposed budget for general government is just over $2 million. Just to highlight for the council, there has been a slight change in that figure because of the actual rate increase for employee health insurance. So the figure that is noted on the agenda cover sheet, which is $2,40,372, is actually the proposed budget for this department as it stands currently. That is an increase of just over 99,000 or 5.1 percent from the FY06 budget. The primary reason for the increase would be a change in personnel cost, as we have previously just mentioned very briefly during a prior budget work session. There is an employee who is in our department whose salary and benefits have been charged to the community center fund in FY06. The issue that we had sort of chosen to highlight for this evening's work session, and certainly we're happy to talk about whatever issues the council would like to, has to do with the legal services budget. This was an item the council had some extensive discussions about last year. And the city attorney is obviously here and can comment a little bit further. One of the things I would just note in the agenda packet is I did provide you with a comparative analysis of the city's legal costs from July through March for both FY05 and FY06, just to kind of give you a sense of how expenditures are tracking this fiscal year compared to the prior year. And as you'll notice, overall, they're down. Certainly, we try, make every effort between the city attorney and myself to try to coordinate and, you know, look for the most cost-effective way of handling issues, but I would be less incandid if I didn't acknowledge that some of it's just dumb luck in what issues tend to come up in one fiscal year compared to another. The one thing I did just want to highlight for the council, because it will somewhat kind of create some confusion, I guess, between the cost figures that are actually going to hit in this year's budget compared to what you're seeing on this sheet. And as a footnote on that comparative analysis indicates, there were some timing issues in terms of receipt of invoices and payment of invoices, so that two months in fiscal year '05, specifically May 2005 and June 2005, were actually paid in FY06. What this in essence means is that when we wrap up this fiscal year, there'll actually be more than 12 months of service and payments for the legal department that will be actually incurred in FY06. So it'll be somewhat skewed on a comparative basis. In the cover memo, I did try to highlight some of the major activities that the city attorney's office has spent time on, and I would probably just defer to Sue maybe to kind of walk through some of those in her presentation. The other item specifically that staff would like some direction on is a request from the city attorney for an increase in the hourly rate. The council had received a memo from the city attorney back in February. She and I subsequently agreed that because the city had not anticipated any rate increase for the FY06 budget, that this matter would be deferred until the council had a chance to talk about it during your budget deliberations for FY07. As my memo in the packet does indicate, from my perspective, the request of the city attorney is reasonable based on, I guess, based on what we're seeing is being charged for city attorneys in other communities, and also just given the fact that it's been a significant period of time before that rate has actually been adjusted. Specifically, the city attorney's hourly billing rate has not been modified since 2001. I'm sure Sue would be very happy to answer any questions the council has about that request. And at this time, Sue, I guess I'd turn it over to you to maybe talk a little bit about the issues that your office has handled this year and any comments you'd like to make about the request for the change in the billing rate.
Thank you very much, Barb. I actually didn't come prepared to describe all that we've been doing, because I saw this more as an opportunity for a dialogue with the council. What I want to remind you of is that what Barb has highlighted is some of the bigger items that we're working on shouldn't be seen in isolation from the many routine things that we actually do all the time. Our most typical things are answering questions of staff, drafting legislation, drafting contracts, very basic personnel advice, very basic procurement advice, just, you know, a very constant flow of that kind of thing, which we call basic general advice. And we have, when we build a city, we divide things up by general advice and then advice to each department head and each area of work within the city. And all of that can be broken down for your interest as to sort of how much we're doing in each of those examples. I would say that just as much work is being done or time is being spent on those kind of routine things as these high-ticket items, which are the extras. And the extras are well-described in this memo from Barb, and she's right. We don't always control what we're working on. For example, the tree commission appeals are sometimes not only appeals within our system, but then they go into the circuit court of Montgomery County, which becomes complex and time-consuming. We don't decide how many of those we're going to get. It's entirely up to the applicant for the tree permit as to whether to appeal what they disagree with. The same thing, of course, is true as to our advice for COLTA. There's a, you know, great deal of work at the administrative level, but also things are appealed, both, you know, general COLTA matters and also rent control matters up to the courts. And we've been, you know, having a fairly good amount of success in those matters, but they are time-consuming and, again, more defensive than proactive, as you know. The more proactive thing on this list, of course, is the rent stabilization recodification item, which is basically an attempt to advise you along with staff as to how the law might be adjusted and updated to make it less likely that we have trouble in court and to make sure that the ordinance is actually having the intended effect. And that we're looking forward to seeing some actual progress in that regard. I know that's been a very difficult, difficult matter for you as elected officials, as well as for us, as trying to provide some legal guidance. I'm happy, I think the best thing to say is that I'm happy to answer any questions. The Womata issue, as you know, we had a major amount of work this past year on that, and then we went into a kind of wait-and-see approach at this point while we wait to see what actual proposal comes in front of the Womata board. There will be a compact hearing coming up in this year, and there will be a lot of legal work that will be associated with that. That hopefully isn't the kind of thing that will keep happening on an annual basis, but will only happen once every, hopefully, you know, 20 years, something of that sort. But I am interested in any of your questions on the actual work we're doing. As to the request for an increase in our rate, I think Barb did a very good job of spelling out sort of a survey of what other municipalities pay their attorneys. We mainly seem to have information from the metropolitan area, both from Montgomery County, where, as you can see, we're very, very low compared to the market, and Rich George's County, where we're not that far off. There are some towns that are a bit lower than us. What was interesting is I talked to some of the attorneys in the two towns that are lower than us and just tried to get some background, and one of the things I found out is that their approach has been to try to get an annual increase. And so, for example, if we had been asking for $5 each year from 2001 through 2006, we would be at the place we are today when we're asking for a $25 increase. They've been trying to do that kind of annual increase idea instead of waiting as we have. We do think that the amount we're asking for is reasonable in light of partly our experience level and also partly on overhead costs. As you can imagine, lawyers do not cost the same for us to hire in 2006 as they did in 2001, not to mention all of the other, you know, kind of costs that we have. So to be able to provide excellent service for the city, we do feel that the rate increase will enable us to continue to perform at an excellent level.
And I note that even at the requested increase, the amount that you're billing the city is still considerably below what your normal charge would be.
Yes, that's right. And that is in recognition of the fact that you are a very good client. You do, we enjoy working with you, and we also have-
It's like a volume discount.
A volume discount, exactly, exactly.
Sometimes too much volume.
Are there any other questions?
Do we have information about how the legal services bill breaks out by COLTA and the tree commission activities and rent stabilization? Yeah, in the past, and it just occurred to me as I was sitting here, that I think I may owe you one or two months of bills, but for, ever since the council started having some extensive discussions about this matter, I guess almost a year ago, I've been taking the summary pages from the invoices we received from Silver and Pearlman and forwarding those to the council. That does break it down by category. I just received the invoice for April today. I'll go back and check in the next day or so, or maybe at the break, and just find out, you know, how many months I still owe you. I think I do owe you at least two months, and I get that information to you.
I've seen those. I guess I, I don't have a sense of, is there some time period when we get a lot of work in one area and not so much in the other area? Like, do we get a lot of tree work when it's fall and, or that kind of thing? And so I didn't really take that-
Does it help you?
Well, I didn't necessarily take that as a sense of exactly how the breakdowns are. So maybe like just a yearly picture of-
I would say, and Sue can correct me if I'm wrong, because obviously I look at the bills each month, I think besides just sort of the general advice category, as Sue outlined in terms of my making a phone call about a variety of issues or other staff people doing the same, probably the single largest category that, I mean, from a pricing standpoint that I recall from month to month, is probably consistently COLTA-related matters, not just a matter of there is a, an appeal of a COLTA decision or something that's more of a litigation nature, but just kind of ongoing advice to the commission. Mr. Sigmund in the city attorney's office technically serves as the executive director for COLTA, attends all the meetings, and that's probably, I guess, other than the general advice category council member Clay, is the single most consistent cost item that I'll see from month to month. And certainly I'd be happy to gather more information on that if you would like.
Well, the reason I ask is just because for areas where we're collecting, you know, fees, permit fees on things, it would be nice to know what is the relationship between what we're able to take in for the provision of that service or the administration of that set of regulations in comparison to what it's costing us. And we have some of that information in the other part of the budget.
I can answer that for you off the top of my head. The amount of revenue that we bring in from tree permits is very nominal. When you look at just the city arborist budget, staff support to the tree commission, and then certainly if you get into any kind of appeal decision, we're certainly not recovering cost in any way, shape, or form.
If I can also just add, not about that specific example, council member Clay, but in general, there's an enormous amount of data that the city manager has about legal services. We break down every specific matter, and it's reported at the, to the tenth of an hour level.
Yes, it's very detailed.
So if one wants to ask any analytical question and use the data that you have, and you've got years of it, you could probably do a lot of that kind of looking to see whether there's a cost-benefit analysis-
Correct.
-and whether permits are at an adequate level. It's all there. It's a question of asking the right questions, I think, but the data is definitely there.
I think the other comment I would just add is certainly the tree permit fee is relatively modest, and certainly we'd be happy to kind of pull together more complete information to answer your question. I guess in my experience, when you have these kind of ordinances or programs, part of it is because the city views them as being of a community-wide benefit-
Yeah.
-and there's not necessarily an expectation that you will recover cost. Certainly, a lot of Mr. Linkletter's time is also spent, you know, just sort of talking to residents. He certainly isn't taking the place of a privately hired arborist, but there's other aspects of his work besides just the actual tree permit processing.
Yeah, I understand that, and I wouldn't want to set a permit so high that you discourage people from participating in the process, and that might not be the best example of an area where you want to have a direct cost-benefit ratio. I just think it might be useful to think, to think about it in terms of what is the overall cost of the program.
Yes, sir. Would you like us to try to gather some information for you in this area? Certainly, I'd be happy to do that.
No, I'll take the reports and look at them.
Okay, just letting you know.
Okay. You've got enough to do.
Bruce?
No question, just a general comment, but I'm happy that the cost of legal services seems to be trending downward, and I have no problem with the requested increase.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Back on the subject that council member Clay brought up, I, you know, I appreciate receiving these invoices and having an opportunity to look through them, and have also noted that they, you know, in the summary sheets at least that we get, there's quite a deal of, you know, quite good breakdown of the billings and broken down by the different categories of work that you're, kind of cases that you're working on. And I know I've seen your detailed reports a couple of times that have been passed along to us, and they, as you said, seem to include quite a bit of detail, not just saying that it was a COLTA case, but actually referencing the particular case so you could identify the time that was spent on that case. I just, do you find that level of reporting on time to be burdensome?
Oh, it's one of the least favorite things about practicing law for me, but it's necessary. It really is the only way to be able to deserve an hourly fee is to be able to give you that type of information.
Yeah, I appreciate you saying that, because I have groused for years about having to do that in the consulting business. But on this other side, sitting on this side of the bench, I would really like us to consider moving to that, that type of time reporting within the city government, because as I look at the various programs and projects that we work on, and I look at the, the way the community center is structured, I think it would be of great value to know how much time is being spent on the various programs that we offer in the community center. I am, I find it difficult to make decisions on some of the programs that we have, such as the Gateway signs and the Wayfinder signs, when all that we really look at is the capital expense of purchasing the signs and not a breakdown of the, of the time spent within our community development and public works departments for the selection and location and installation of those signs. So I would like to suggest that we on the council, at some point during this budget process, think about allocating some money for conversion to a time-reporting system based on a work breakdown structure with a similar approach that Ms. Silver uses with her, with her company. I would like to have the opportunity to discuss that.
Well, we can, we can discuss it at some point. I would, I don't know that it's a budget issue, but I, and I would be interested in hearing the city manager's take on it also.
It would be helpful, I think.
Not necessarily right now, but at the appropriate time.
Right. I think it would be helpful to have some feedback, though, because I do see that there might be some budget impact for establishing a new process and also ensuring that we have the software or contracting service available that would provide the process support required.
Yeah, I'll just make a few general comments. I would probably need to defer to the director of finance in terms of our payroll system, because as, you are correct, council member Sigmund, normally there is some software that usually lends itself to that, our payroll systems, and unless that's something that you typically do, I don't know if our software allows it. My other comment would be is I've seen a kind of project-based accounting, if you will, or payroll, in those circumstances where perhaps the entity is charging the administrative and overhead time back to a capital project. It's actually a fairly common practice in many cities. It's usually allowed by grants. I have to, just off the top of my head, have to question, unless that's the way the city intends to use the data, it may just fall into a category of capturing data for the sake of capturing it. The issue that most jurisdictions have to weigh, as well as certainly an appropriate project expense in terms of the staff time that is spent, obviously what it does is you have a $50,000 grant and you're spending, I was pulling a number out of air, $10,000 on, you know, staffing and things like that. It leaves less money for the actual amenities that a lot of times residents are looking for from a particular grant. So it's just a trade-off. I'm not saying there's a right or wrong. I've seen it handled both ways. But certainly before the budget process is concluded, the director in finance, and I can talk a little bit more about it and try to give you a little bit more information.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and some of the issues you bring up are things that I think we would have to discuss. But I think that as I hear some of the discussions as we go through our life on the council, you know, there are things like, you know, what percentage of the time is a police officer spending on patrol that might be more easily answered with a time-reporting system, such as that. As far as the increase, I don't know whether that's on the table, or should we be talking about that, making a decision tonight, or what's the, what's the plan on that?
My understanding is that it is in front of us right now, that there is, that the city manager has made an estimate of what it would cost to go to the higher rate, and that is included in the budget if I'm-
That's correct. I mean, whether the council chooses to make a definitive, you know, conclusion at this time, I guess I defer to you, or if you want to deal with it during the reconciliation process. I did just want to flag the fact for you that I did make an assumption in terms of my budget proposal that the city attorney's request would be honored. Obviously, if the council is not so inclined to do so, I would need to basically just do some calculations to take it back out. Or if there's some alternative figure the council would like to consider and discuss with the city attorney, that would obviously impact the budget as well.
Right. I have long advocated that I think that we should, it's been a long time since we competed this contract, and we should recompete the contract to get a good sense of what is available and who else is out there that, what their approach might be and what their rates would be.
Well, I think, and we've talked about this before, I think there are issues both ways in terms of making the contract, sending the contract out again. I am comfortable with the work that the city attorney does. Anytime you hire a new attorney, as we have found in hiring professionals in other instances, you can do the best job in the world of checking references and talking to people, but you don't really know what you're getting until the person starts working for you. And I think the current city attorney has a track record, we're familiar with it. I'm comfortable with her work. I would have to offset that against what we would gain by recompeting the contract. And given the fact that she is very competitive with all the other city attorneys that we've looked at, I'm not sure what we would gain from putting, you know, putting the contract out to bid again.
I didn't say this earlier, but I support the increase.
I support the increase also, and I assume that there's going to have to be a formal discussion, because we are going to have to amend the city attorney's contract or some similar thing in order to formalize it.
That's correct.
But it would appear to me, just from the people who are here this evening, that there is a majority of the people who are here this evening who are, who do appear to be in favor of that. And so my suggestion would be unless somebody wishes to bring it up and put it on the reconciliation list, that we just put it, put it in the budget for now, and we will, we would have another discussion at the time that it came up for a formal contract change.
Well, whether or not we were going to recompete the city attorney contract or not, it has been pretty clear to me from everything that I've seen that if we did that, in the end result, we'd be paying more than what this budget represents. So I don't, I don't see that there would be a point in not just including it into the budget, because we would, if we recompete, we're going to pay more.
Right. I concur.
Any other discussion on the legal work that the city is doing? It's not the only item in general government, and I have a couple of other questions, but is there anything, as long as we've got the city attorney here, is there any other questions we've wanted to direct toward?
As long as we're going to be paying her to be here.
Yeah, and we could certainly save money on legal fees by being more expeditious in our discussions. So maybe we should just conclude ours, thank the city attorney, and move on to the next item.
Okay, thank you. You know where to find us.
Okay. I had, does anybody else have, I had a couple of questions, just looking, just informational questions, just looking at the budget summary for general government. And I noticed there's a couple of areas where costs seem to be quite a bit changed between last year and the proposed budget for this year. One of them is in the legislative area, and I assume, since we don't have a detailed breakout, I'm not sure what those, what those cost items are. The other one that I noticed was, now, under finance, services and charges, I assume that that's because that was the contract with the former finance director who was assisting, and that we don't need to do that anymore. Is that what that difference is?
Yeah, there was, the city certainly expended a lot of funds earlier this year utilizing the services of Ms. McKenzie. I believe, Ms. Brooks can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there's $10,000 included in the budget that she submitted for some type of contractual services. In all likelihood, that would not be fully expended, as Ms. McKenzie is, has either or plans to relocate to North Carolina, so she won't even be available. But that is correct, Mayor, in terms of the change in services and charges and finance. And I hope Mr. Hobbs, I just was telling council member Clay, I left some papers upstairs, which would allow me to answer your question better. In terms of services miscellaneous, Wayne, and legislative, what do you call it?
I took a look at the history on some of the accounts, the money, like commissions, there was $500, and we've never spent it.
Okay.
So I felt the liberty of removing it, since it's a cost that we don't need.
It sounds like a good thing to do. We shouldn't be carrying it indefinitely. We're not using it.
And I think a couple others, I'd just lower it somewhat.
That, that may account for, the, under human services, there also seems to be an increase, and I don't know if you could speak to that.
In services and charges, Wayne?
Yes, in services and charges and miscellaneous. The services and charges is sort of the most notable one, but it, it's a difference in the bottom line for human resources from 101,000 to 136,000.
Most of that is in contracts and, I'm drawing a blank. I know that we decided that we were going to do something. We put contract money in there.
Thirty-five thousand dollars, something?
Right now, right now is, I'm totally blank, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll get back to the council.
Okay. Those were the only other questions that I had?
No, the case study's been done right now, it's just, no.
Twenty, twenty questions, and is it bigger than a breadbox?
No, I do remember. We want to purchase some software to automate our personnel evaluation system.
Okay.
And it's in there while we explore what it is we want and then come back to the council.
Okay, and, and-
Because it'll probably be well over 10.
Right, but it wouldn't be 35?
Uh, I don't know. I'll give you more detail.
Okay. I mean, that, that sounds like a reasonable notion, and certainly we'll have more discussion on it when it comes back. Anything else in this area, Bruce?
I have some questions. It's, in some cases, not clear to me whether they fall under general government, whether they, whether they fall under communication, whether they, whether they fall under non-departmental. So I'll ask them, and if you want to say no, we'll do it in that next section. Is risk management in general government or non-departmental?
General government.
Okay.
The, the cost, insurance costs are in 9,000, non-departmental.
All I was looking for was any sense of a trend in risk management costs.
They've been, they've been hold and steady. If you're talking about insurance, liability, insurance, auto insurance, there's going to be a general increase this year, and that's primarily, all insurance companies are experiencing that in liability, et cetera.
But our experience rating is-
Right, right.
Right, right. And we still have a, a reduction this year in the overall cost, which is figured in the budget from the equity credit that we got three years ago, and we phased it over three years. So we will get a credit this year of $35,986. That's been figured into the budget and backed out. But we're going to vary anywhere from about 15% increase on general liability, 10% on property, 9% on auto liability. They have not given us the exact rates yet. They gave us estimates on what the percentages will be. So I took last year's cost and picked them up by that percent, and then deducted $37,000.
All right, good. Can we, can we get a, a simple summary of what our recodification costs have been over the period that we've been doing it?
Off the top of my head?
It doesn't have to be during the budget.
Certainly. Yeah, that is one of the items, if you may recall, on the city attorney's legal services breakdown. It was a separate category, so we can certainly go back and prepare that for you.
But I didn't, I didn't know if it was beyond just the legal services budget, whether it was various departmental budgets or costs, or, and I'm not sure the level of breakdown that you have on it.
The legal services cost would be one item that we could certainly break out for the council. There was obviously some contractual costs that were incurred with, and I'm drawing a blank, maybe Ms. Carpenter can help me out, with the company that we contracted with for the software.
Licensees.
Right. And with that, certainly something that we could easily obtain for you. I think probably the more challenging thing is just the amount of staff time that went into it.
And so, and so I'm not looking for, I'm not looking for the level of detail that we've come from what Terry was requesting, since we don't have that.
Right.
But I'm looking for a general sense of what the costs have, have been, whether there's, whether we've pretty much reached the end of it with, you know, kind of where they were heavy, or why they were heavy, or just, just some narrative of
Sure.
of how that whole process went, so that if there are questions that come up in the near future about further recodification is something we have parameters for understanding how that process is going.
Yeah, but it would be acceptable, Councilmember Williams, what we can do, as I indicated, is go back through some of the legal bills, and certainly that's a hard cost that's, you know, well documented, and provide that to you. As Ms. Carpenter mentioned, with license nexus, that's just a matter of doing a vendor search on the city's accounts payable system, and we could easily obtain those costs. In terms of any kind of future recodification, as you may have noted in the memo included in the agenda packet, there were and are some costs that we are currently incurring relative to rent stabilization, obviously, given the nature of that item. We have consulted with the city attorney's office in terms of coming up with recommendations to present to the council. I'm sure we would be using their services should the council choose to make any changes in the code in terms of legal drafting, of any legislation for your consideration. There might be some other very minor kind of tweaks, Mr. Hobbs and I have talked it for a while, but one of the things we'd like to do is go back and look through the procurement section of the code. It hasn't really been looked at. What we would envision in that instance is that staff would basically prepare something after some discussions with the council. So we would be taking the lead in terms of doing any drafting and merely have the city attorney's office review it, just as we would in any other instance.
The personnel procedures need to be reworked also. They're, they're pretty much outdated with the various union contracts.
Right. So there, so there are ongoing projects that need to come forward, just having the, the overall reference for how that has gone and what its cost could be.
Sure. Okay, we'll be happy to do that.
Okay. Just a couple more. Any sense of how we've shifted costs as we've gone from kind of more hard mailing stuff to electronic? How that has affected costs? My sense is that we get a lot more information out in a lot more time and fashion. Have our mailing costs gone down?
I don't know if we have that level.
And if you don't have the information, just make it a, you know, get back.
I can give you a trend. I'm not sure how much we can clearly delineate. Obviously, we have a lot of just general postage cost in terms of mailing things, and I can't really speak to maybe what happened prior to my tenure. We've done very few citywide mailings, you know, during my tenure. I think one was the bond issue discussion back in '04 or '05.
The type of thing I'm thinking about is it used to be that agendas were mailed, and then it went agendas were emailed. And I'm wondering if there, if there's a cumulative effect of that type of thing that has kind of taken away a large area of mailing costs.
Yeah, with that specific item, I know there's some agendas that still get mailed out. There's probably a number that Ms. Carpenter sends them to electronically. I kind of defer to her on this particular item.
It's, there's not a lot of expense involved in it. I do mail, so we mail about hoarding agendas each week, just because we have some people who do not want it yet.
Right, but it used to be hundreds.
Right, that's right. And we have created a list of.
And, and there were duplicating costs and all that stuff that went with it.
Exactly, that's right. It's a time saver to not have to do it.
I know that when I asked about the action system, when Housing and Community Development was here, that they said that they, that the employee, the position that we were talking about at that time really liked it for tracking. Is that indicative of how staff in general feels? Are there mixed feelings? Do people hate it?
I think Abel Castillo, who many of you know as our IT Director, is here. He's responsible for kind of overseeing action.
And has there been feedback from the public that they love it or hate it? Are they using it?
I haven't made any surveys. Good evening. I haven't made any surveys or any, you know, calculations with the public. I have received some negative comments from the public. They can't use it with all the browsers, things like that. That's been since day one. We are, in fact, starting our discussions with our communication office to try to improve that website, trying to make it look and feel like our website, city's website. So I think there's some improvements in the way. We have updated the database software that goes behind it, so that, I think that also has some improvements. We use it internally. The IT Department uses it for all our calls for service. I think Public Works uses it to a certain extent. They've had some staff changes up there, so there's that training that has to happen.
So it sounds like it's fairly integrated into operations?
I would say that.
Yes, okay. Because I know it took us a while and a number of different vendors and software packages to get to what it sounds like we're at, because I think that was an area of general dissatisfaction among a large number of people for quite some time.
I agree.
Okay. And if I can just get a quick sense from you, Abel, on information systems, costs. What I'm thinking about is, it wasn't that many years ago where I remember hearing that we didn't put the cost for any of the computers in departmental budgets, you know, we didn't have anybody on staff full-time dealing with it. And it looks like from a number of items in the budget, where in the capital budget there are various server costs identified. And I know that there are, what now, what are we at, two FTEs?
Yep.
That it seems to be fairly, again, integrated into operations and with, able to identify kind of what the costs are. And my sense is that this is where we knew we were going to end up having to be even long before we got here. Could you characterize?
I can tell you, we, we're glad we're at this point, because now everything is being tracked in the capital improvement project and things like that. We had not gone, we have not gone to council in the past. Let's see, the last time we went to council was actually Y2K, and we got a few servers then. Probably about the same, as far as dollar value, probably about the same now as it was back then. Things have come down in cost. We actually have not also come to council. The, the building project has actually stifled our desire to get new server and get new equipment. I don't want to bring a new server into the construction environment. So we, we did our lab with what we had. And then we really did organize ourselves, and we, we found out that we build servers with our in-house capabilities that now are also coming of age, five years old, which is what we want to, at the point we want to change it. We've also realized that our mail, our voicemail system has been online for a while. So that was one of the capital improvement projects. And, yeah, this year has kind of brought a lot of things to light, and actually has things that thus has settled, so we can also think about all these things too.
Literally.
So that's, that's why we've got six servers on the list for this year. You were holding off until after the construction.
Are we going to end up having that, that baby boom generation of servers ripple through the capital budget for years to come?
We're hoping.
No, I'm sure something will break prematurely. They always do.
But we're trying, Abel's trying to get a five-year life out of each one.
Right.
And we're going, you know, hopefully, now that we put them in the capital improvements plan, we can start making contributions to the equipment replacement reserve, so that we can buy them out of that in the future.
Good. I could go to one or two other places, but I don't want to take too much time on this. Maybe if I can just mention that I did notice in the capital budget that there was something in '09 for work in this room. And let me just say that as the, as we move forward with trying to figure out exactly what we're going to do with improvements to this, to make it more multipurpose, that could involve extending the stage and doing some other things, that there may be a need to revisit how some of those costs get dealt with, and it may be appropriate to do it out of unappropriated reserves or some other combination of things, but I just want to point that out to folks.
I think Councilmember Williams, whether intentional or not, just gave me a good segue. If there's not any further questions about the general government operating budget, I was going to move to capital outline. Councilmember Williams?
I'm sorry, I did want to follow up on a couple of things. First of all, I would like to thank my colleague, Councilmember Williams, for giving another good example of why a better time reporting system would be helpful in this council. It was just one of many illustrations I think I've seen on this council where we have an interest in knowing what a project or program really costs, including not just contractor time, but also staff time. And then I, I heard a couple of illustrations, both from Mayor Porter and Councilmember Williams, of some interest at least in looking at more detail than what we see in the, in the budget right here, you know, questions that aren't answered by looking at the budget and might be helpful. And I know that, that a couple of years ago, when we were going through a process of looking for a new city manager and got a new city manager, we had talked about sitting down at this council and, and thinking about how we do our budget process. And I don't know that we ever got to that. I think we've certainly seen some, some changes in our budget process that have been brought forward and, and, you know, good, great improvements from the city manager. But I would like to, to have this council sometime think about what do we really want to see in the budget? And whether, you know, it be program-based or project-based, or what level of detail that we want to see in the budget. And it comes from a feeling that I would like to see a little more detail, and I also, you know, mentioned the idea of having some more project-oriented information. Back on the issue at hand tonight. Again, Abel, I'm also interested in the, in the software. I know that the Action Tacoma software was one that was really an issue a couple of years ago, and I'm glad to hear that people are using it and, and happy with it. I know that we also were struggling with some of the accounting software and the financial software we had, which came from the same company at that time. And I'm just curious how that, how that software is now. You know, is that something we should be looking at, is, is new software used for our bookkeeping? And maybe you're the wrong person to answer that question, but.
Yeah, I'd suggest that maybe Ms. Brooks might be the better person to answer that. Mr. Castillo can certainly talk about it from a technical standpoint, but she's really the primary user, she and her staff, so.
Right. I would just point out that we just finished a total upgrade of the finance system this year, and we go, we want more to point and click. I know from user, from my viewpoint of getting stuff out of the system and information, it's about 300% better and quicker than it was, and it seems to be pretty much state-of-the-art. I don't know whether Yvonne agrees with that or not. That's, that's, that's my opinion.
Yeah, they're definitely the heavy users, but we're actually spreading the wealth around pretty good, because we've got, every department's using it for all their purchasing. Every department's using it for payroll. It's not a perfect system. It's not a perfect system. And one thing we do have is, I, I think we have pretty good tech support. We, we get responses to, to our requests. They need nudging sometimes on some issues. A lot of times it's user, our end user not knowing the new application, the learning curve is there. It's definitely got totally different look and feel, our upgrade has been. And this year, on top of the construction, we've been going through this, trying to train staff and some limited space when we could do our training, but I think a lot of the issues that we've had have been users not knowing or not feeling comfortable enough with it, some users frustrated with it. I know you've been frustrated with it, but you can, you should talk.
Yvonne DeBrooks, Finance Director. With the upgrade, the system has, for fund accounting, has become more user-friendly, and we get better-looking reports, and it's easier for, I guess, the department has to go in and to find the information that they need accounting-wise that are taken to the budget in their accounting. The only issues that the finance department has is, we do run into some problems when we interface the modules into fund accounting. And sometimes if you input it a certain way or use the wrong code, it causes problems that we can't track because it's done electronically. And so that just requires basically the finance director going in and having to make some drawing for us to make those corrections. But I think it is probably difficult to find vendors that specialize in fund accounting systems. And the system that we have now is meeting our needs as far as being able to produce the financial statements that we need to give to our auditors to come up with our audit report at the end of the year.
Okay. I, I appreciate the answer, and I come away with a lukewarm feeling. Bye, thank you.
Are there any other questions before we move to the capital part? Okay. Do you want to move to the? We don't tend to have a lot of capital items from the general government department. Really, the, the major ones all deal with information technology. That's part of the reason why Mr. Castillo is here tonight. We've touched a little bit on some of the servers. Perhaps there might be some additional comments he'd like to make about that. And you'll also note that there is a upgrade in the Public Works phone system that I believe Ms. Braithwaite may have talked about briefly, but Mr. Castillo may also have some comments about that.
Yeah, I agree.
They got a phone system that actually works.
We, we want to add a little updating up there. When we bought our new phone system back in 2002, we really got the bare bones up there. We've, as part of our disaster recovery discussion, we identified Public Works as a potential place for some backup of our software, some redundancy that we can have up there. And by enhancing the phone, we're going to get, we'll be on our way to having a better phone system up there in case we, we do have a disaster that we can use. Ideally, you want to have a site that you mirror to with data and a site that you back up to that's far away, 50 miles or more. The Public Works would be a site that we would mirror to for redundancy close by, and we need to identify another site that we would back up to, a remote site that we back up to. But we need to go a step at a time, and I think the first step is enhancing Public Works. And I think the first step is enhancing Public Works' phone system. There are some software upgrades that we would also be doing to our city building software as part of this project. So it's a way of updating our current one and enhancing what we have at Public Works, which has caused us problems. It's just so basic up there that there is no redundancy up there. And we've had troubles. A little frustration with Public Works sometimes in our circuits. The voicemail system, it is an upgrade. We've had a system running since 2002 when we bought the, we bought the switch and the voicemail at the same time. By upgrading, we're going to be enhancing the hardware and enhancing, well, the new software enhancements that the switch provides and that the voicemail system provides. We've had some problems with voicemail recently. We've had it down a couple of times. So it's, we've got some telltale signs coming and we want to avoid that.
Are there any questions about the capital outlay section of general government? Karen?
I have several. One, I brought up when Public Works budget, we were discussing the Public Works budget, and that is the security system up there. And I asked about the times of day that the police department and the fire department could get gas.
24/7.
Somehow, the firemen feel that that's not 24/7, that they've been, that because of problems with the gas pumps, that they can't get gas except when the facility is open.
We've had some problems with the gas pumps and the system, the dispenser up there. We're replacing them. We're in the process of doing that.
So they can't come 24/7 then?
I don't know that that had happened. What you're telling me is news to me. I thought it was 24/7.
Okay.
It's certainly our goal to make sure it's 24/7.
Yeah, because I understand for a number of months, they've had to use credit cards at the gas pumps to get gas in the middle of night.
The new system that we're installing will correct that.
How about our police department? They...
Chief Kramer is here. She can certainly speak to the police department.
The pumps are available during normal business hours, typically from about 6:00 AM till about 5:00 in the evening to the police cars. After the normal business hours and the yard is closed up, we, the officers do have keys to the gate. However, because of some recent malfunctions with the gas pump, it won't accept the card reader for the individual cruiser that he happened to be operating. And yes, there is, arrangements were made with a station in Langley Park so that the officers can get gas for their cars.
Okay.
And we have gas access 24 hours a day at Public Works, no.
Okay.
Not after 5:00.
And my understanding was the swipe card wasn't really working, and I just wondered how we keep track of how much we can build back to the county if they're getting gas during the daytime and the swipe card that keeps track of, you know, who's buying gas doesn't work.
I can't answer that.
Well, the receipt, I've had to do this myself on occasion, but you get a receipt from the local gas station.
He's talking about the get, he's talking about the pump.
But during the daytime, when you're pumping out of the Public Works...
Yes, Public Works staff does capture that data. They have a logbook that they maintain. And the receipts that we get outside of Public Works, we put the car number on, mileage, the operator's name. And submit those to Public Works.
Yeah, and I assume the county uses their own credit card to get gas outside of normal...
Well, they have a system that's probably similar to the one that we use at Public Works. There's a card or something, a similar device that's been issued for each county-owned vehicle. And when they go to a fueling station, they'll insert the car, card, or wave it or whatever. And they enter mileage, you know, the vehicle number, the operator's ID, so on and so forth.
Okay, I appreciate that. While you're at the table, the other day I had raised a question about the in-car computers not working. And I understand that the, from a reply from Mr. Hobbs, that there was a problem with the modems. But I'm concerned that, you know, we've had these computers because the department advised us that it would enhance the ability of the officers out on patrol, and yet it's been a number of months since they've worked. And I'm concerned that, you know, where did the, where was the breakdown? Why didn't the Verizon let us know? I mean, they made an announcement in 2002 that they were going to drop support for these modems. I'm not sure when we bought the computers, but I'd just like to know where's the breakdown that has, number one, got us in a position where the computers didn't work, and then number two, has kept us from getting them back online since the beginning of the year? The, you know, we get our access, I understand, from the in-car computers through the park But yet they've been online. Did they not let us know that there was a problem?
There's a, I mean, should I address this now or should I wait until we transition into the police department's budget?
Why don't we, why don't we do it as part of the police issue?
Okay.
It is a part of the police department's...
And when we, as soon as we finish with general government, we're going straight to police. So if you could just hold off on that for a minute, we will...
It's fine with me.
We will pick it up.
Go.
And any other questions on this, on general government issues? Just to remind the council, we have two issues that we're going to discuss in more detail on Monday, one of which, a request from Historic Tacoma to do, to enter into a contract with the city regarding the maintenance of the city's archives would fall into general government. That and the discussion of the Safe Tacoma project will be talked about in more detail on Monday. So at this point, I guess we move to police.
Right.
While all the police department folks are coming to the table, I'll just make my normal customary introductory comment. Like all the other operating budgets, the police department budget has been slightly modified since the budget was submitted to the council originally. The blue sheet basically reflects the current proposed budget for the police department, which is $5,023,954. As proposed, that would represent an increase of $381,573 or 8.2%. As the budget at a glance reflects, there's really a couple of things that are driving that increase. Probably first and foremost, the budget as submitted to the council does reflect the full cost of police staffing. As some of you may recall, Councilmember Clay was not on the council at the time, particularly for her benefit. During the reconciliation process, the council did direct a reduction of $130,000 in the FYI-06 budget due to some vacant positions and sort of the timing associated when those positions would likely be filled. As I mentioned, what's before you this evening would reflect the full cost of the city's staffing. I'm sure the chief is going to address this. There are also two proposed new part-time civilian positions that are reflected in my recommended budget. One would basically deal with accreditation and one with property and evidence. And I know there's a memo included in the packet providing some additional information about that proposal, and the chief, I'm sure, will touch on it. Besides personnel, which probably more so than any other department, the police department budget is driven by personnel cost in the range of about 94%, and that's probably much higher than any other budget that you'll see come before you. The only other area probably worth noting has to do with services and charges. As you sort of look through the various divisions, you may have noted that there were some increases in that area. That's primarily attributable to two things, the higher cost for meter collection and basically the cost of a promotional process, which we anticipate will take place sometime in FYI-07, and we typically do work with a consultant on that promotion process. With that, I'll turn it over to the chief and her staff. There were some specific issues that we thought would be of interest to the council that were covered in the agenda packet, one of which Councilmember Siemens has already touched on, which has to do with the in-car computers. I'll leave it to the chief to see where she'd like to start.
Sure, thanks. I think, first of all, it would be appropriate to introduce the staff with me this evening. And starting at the far end of the table, on my right, is Carol Bannerman. She's the Police Affairs Specialist. And among the varied tasks, duties, and responsibilities she has, she also is currently performing as the department's accreditation manager. To her left is Captain Ed Corsi. He's the Operations Commander. Immediately to my left is Lieutenant Richard Cipperly, who serves as the Support Services Commander in charge of investigations. And to his left is Denise Pullet, who is the Director of our Administrative Services. The city manager mentioned, excuse me, that you have a memorandum that's attached to this particular agenda item. I think the first thing that will probably leap out at you is the fact that in the next fiscal year, one of the things that I am strongly recommending and asking for are two part-time positions in the police department. A brief historical overview when it comes to the accreditation manager's position, which has been requested 0.5 FTE out of the Office of the Chief. Up until the latter part of the '90s, we had 42 sworn police officer positions. One of those positions was a deputy chief's position. And the duties and responsibilities, among other things, associated with that position was to oversee the variety of grants that the police department had, as well as had a sole responsibility, in essence, for managing the accreditation function. And during the latter part of the '90s, that, a 42nd position in the police department, one of the sworn positions, was abolished, which meant that the duties typically handled by the deputy chief obviously had to fall to other people in the police department, most likely a member of command staff. I'll remind you that the police department was first accredited in 1990. That was back when it was a five-year cycle. We were reaccredited in 1995. And we got to a point, a number of years ago, we were still on the five-year cycle, and in an effort to save some money, we had a person that was performing contractually as an accreditation manager, but in an effort to save some money, that position was cut and that person was let go. I'll remind you that that's when the agency developed a host of problems when it came to maintaining the accreditation. As a result, the department was not reaccredited, would not have been reaccredited. And it was about that time that I came in and into the chief's position, that I was forced to make a decision as far as whether I pushed this and insisted that the commission present the police department before the full agency at a conference in Cleveland, and that would have been in July of '02. Or did I help to save some face and withdraw the agency from the process altogether? It was clear that there were a number of things that happened that served as constant distractions that took us away from the overall mission of accreditation. But one of those things that served as a distraction as well as a hindrance was the fact that we had lost the person that was performing in this accreditation manager role. Without someone to oversee the process, quite frankly, the department is destined for failure. I think that, I would hope that council has recognized the value of having an accredited police department. It's certainly a management tool for the police chief to keep their thumb on the pulse of the organization, to measure the progress that the agency is making towards goals and objectives. It certainly better serves the community, and the list goes on and on and on as far as the benefits go. But I think that in light of the fact that we just recently practically broke our backs to get this department accredited, not reaccredited, but accredited, the hours invested in this was ridiculous, quite frankly. All of us at this table worked weekends beyond eight hours a day because we didn't have one person that was dedicated. I had a person that I'm pretty surprised I didn't kill in the process. I'm grateful that I didn't. I'm grateful that, you know, this individual, Carol Bannerman, is who I'm talking about, is the workhorse that she is, no offense by using that term, but she's extremely dedicated to the department as well as the city, the overall mission, and the fact that I had set this goal for the department, that she was willing to literally give up her personal life to ensure that the police department got accredited, as did everyone else at this table, as did every other member of the organization. Everyone had a significant role in ensuring that we became an accredited police department. If we don't get, I'm absolutely confident that if we can identify and get the authorization to have someone come in to perform in a part-time capacity, no benefits associated with this position, and we do that in a timely fashion, that the agency will stay on track and have no problem being reaccredited. If this doesn't happen, then although I won't be here three years from now, I guarantee you that it's not likely at all that the agency will be able to be reaccredited without someone performing in this role. We all, in the police department, perform a variety of tasks, wear a variety of hats. We're all very willing to do this. And I'm going to take responsibility for this. I have to, I have no choice. I think that over the nearly 30 years that I've worked here, it's become kind of accepted that you have to wear a variety of hats. We're a relatively small agency. We're midsize. We're not the county police. We never will be. We don't have the budget that's attached with the county police department. You do what you have to do in order to get the job done. I've always been considered a frugal person, some would say cheap, I'm sure. In my personal life, as well as my professional life in managing the police department, I scrutinize every expenditure and account for every nickel and dime and question everything. Does it have to be the Cadillac or can we go with the Fiesta kind of thing? I'm going to tell you that I haven't balked at additional duties and responsibilities for my staff over the last four years. I've not asked for anything in my budget over the last four years. I have willingly said publicly, you know, at a community meeting, whatever, of course, we can do that. We'll do that for you. While it has recently dawned on me that I probably made some very poor management decisions by agreeing to that, by committing my staff to additional work and duties, number one, without consulting with them, but basing the decision on the fact that I've been here 30 years, I've been here a long time, I know what we can do and what we can't do. Times have changed significantly. I'm apologizing to my staff for putting the additional burden and workload on them, putting these unrealistic expectations on them, and quite frankly, wearing them down, probably lending to a very demoralizing work atmosphere. I think that, you know, the workload that they currently have is more than they can bear, and to expect that they can handle these additional duties and responsibilities is beyond belief. It's not going to happen. It can't happen. I think that if we continue to do this, that I might as well open the door and escort my staff out because, in essence, that's what I'll be doing, is forcing them to look for other jobs with other agencies where they can probably make, at a minimum, the same amount of money with much less work. But I guess I'm trying to appeal to the emotional side of this, but attaching a realistic aspect to it as well and trying to explain the need for... to it as well, and trying to explain the need for an accreditation manager. I think that if we wait much longer, we'll find ourselves in a full-time need. Right now, it can certainly be accomplished on a part-time capacity. The other part-time position that I've been asking for in this memorandum, as you can see, is someone to handle the property and evidence function. Again, existing staff has had to step up to the plate and handle additional workload that, quite frankly, they don't have the time to do. And when you think about it, all of the expectations, their normal duties and responsibilities, when you begin to heap additional jobs onto them, none of their jobs are receiving the attention that they should. And of course, the quality of work declines as a result. We fail to meet the expectations of the community. Customer service declines, and so on and so forth. So that's basically my position on asking for these new part-time positions. I think that in the past, I have not made it clear to council, or even the city manager, that these are very real needs. This isn't about empire building, or trying to make a Police Department a little bit larger so that, you know, we can flex our muscles and say, oh, we've got X number of staffers on board. It's got absolutely nothing to do with that. It's just faced, we've reached a point in time where we can't handle the additional workload. I'll be glad to answer any questions about that before I move on to the next, if there are any.
I would agree with you that I think the accreditation process and the departments getting accreditation has been very valuable. I wonder, though, if you could describe exactly what the person who would be an accreditation staff person would actually do, over and above what your staff would normally do, or that you would do as managers?
Well, there are 446 standards, excuse me. Many of, I'm sorry.
Big Justin Priest.
Okay, I'm going to defer to Carol Bannerman, who has actually completely and totally immersed herself in this, and her knowledge far exceeds mine. I mean, I know what my exposure, go ahead.
What does the accreditation person do? In some?
For example, there, as she was saying, there was, in the last edition of CLEIA, 446 standards. One-third of those standards are multiple bullets standards. So in essence, you are trying to create proofs for 1,030 standards and bullets. You must show that the department has some sort of directive that responds to CLEIA standard. And then you must show documentation for each of three years, for each year of the cycle, for each of those standards or bullets. Anytime there are changes in US law, state law, city code, as well as in CLEIA standards, the accreditation manager has to look at our general orders and make sure that we're staying in touch with the new laws as well as the CLEIA standards. For example, with the re-codification of city code, a lot of our general orders reference the old city code. I have not yet completed the task of going through the more than 150 general orders of the department to make sure that those melt. So it's a matter of constantly reviewing our general orders for compliance with CLEIA standards, with the laws of the state having to do, for example, with racial profiling, as well as current appropriate practices. And making, so keeping the directives up to date. CLEIA has more than 50 standards that are time-sensitive kinds of reports. There are certain standards that must be done every time a police officer, trying to think of an example, every time a police officer does a certain task. Every time we have an incident, for example, where we have a hostage barricade situation, we have to have certain kinds of reports, always making sure we have those. There are other reports that are required on a monthly, weekly, quarterly, half-year, yearly basis, and following up and making sure that we have those in every time period during the three years of an accredited status.
Understanding that, as the chief said, you've put in extra time, and I understand why. You said that some of the things that are required, you haven't been able to keep up with because of other demands. Do you have a sense of how much of your time you spend doing that?
Well, I can say that in the six weeks prior to the onsite, I worked 504 hours, which basically means that for six weeks, I worked seven days a week, 12 hours a day. And that's not including the time that I spent over the course of, what, 14, 16 months prior to that, where I was trying to put in a minimum of 10 to 12 hours a week on accreditation. I would say that over the course of three years, people, if you're just considering me and the person who was performing the job prior to me, if you averaged it out over the course of the three years, I would say that the accreditation manager was doing about 1,400 hours a year, and a part-time person is only 1,000. And that does not include the time as the chief, I mean, the chief probably was working seven days a week, 12 hours a day for at least a month prior to. And every, people here, I had dispatchers who I set to certain tasks to find the appropriate proofs. So a part-time position is an absolute, I would say, minimum. If you look at other, we're considered a B-sized agency. That means we have 25 to 70 people on staff. If you look at, for example, Rockville City Police Department with 61 staff members as a full-time accreditation manager. Hyattsville City, which has 40 staff members, has a full-time accreditation manager. Laurel, which has 67 staff members, has a full-time accreditation person who works underneath a lieutenant who also has some responsibility for the accreditation function. Some of the things, I would say, one of the things, if you want to get a sense of accreditation, is the current snapshot for the month of May talks about the process we went through, and how these people feel about it, what they learned and what they did during the course of the accreditation. It's very clear that accreditation is something that happens every day in the department. And there are some things that you learn as you're going through the accreditation process, just some of the little dot the i and cross the t that might slip up, you can build on and you might catch something that's not happening. It's a silly idea, but CLEIA says you've got to respond to traffic hazards appropriately. And you discover in the course of reviewing records that officers are going out and they're dealing with it, but it's not getting documented. And that's the key to accreditation, is we can do everything that's required for accreditation, but if we're not documenting it, we're not going to be accredited. And that tends to, I think that that's what happens if you don't have an accreditation manager. And once you quit documenting it, then it's easy for other things to slip and you start missing.
Okay, thank you. That was very helpful. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bannerman. That was an excellent explanation. I'm curious, so you used the example of a change in the state law for racial profiling, prior to us being accredited. What would happen if there was a change in the law at the state level? How did that get assimilated into the, into the Police Department?
Well, when the law went into effect, it was, the law was written and was implemented or phased in, if you will, depending upon the agency's size. So we were, I believe, considered a tier-three agency. So it was probably the third or last year that we had to be in compliance with that. The CLEIA standards are clear in that they require certain things. They don't necessarily tell you how you're going to do it. The individual agency determines that. But obviously, we would have had to have complied with that, the collection of data for racial profiling. But perhaps a better example would be, I can't think of one, so that...
Well, I would say what happened in the case of racial profiling was, we knew the law had taken place. We knew we needed to comply with it. Actually, this is during, this is prior to my adding accreditation to my duties.
Right.
But in my recollection, what we did is, we knew it had to be done. Command staff looked at the requirements of the law, determined what was necessary. And we found volunteers in the department to work on a general order with the person who was doing accreditation. And then we found volunteers who taught the in-service training that was required. But it was a fairly complicated process, sometimes to, you don't want to, sometimes you're going to write your general order yourself, but sometimes you have to contact other agencies. And that's the nice thing about an accreditation manager, who knows who to call in another agency and say, what are you doing for this? How are you going to handle it? An example would be the Safe Haven law. Safe Haven had become a state law, I'm trying to remember when, probably in October of 2003. And the first week that I was an accreditation manager, someone threw a piece of paper on my desk, which was from the Montgomery County Human Services. And they said, we're going to, we've lost a couple of babies because girls are dumping them. So Montgomery County is going to put this out to all pregnancy centers and maternity centers. And it's going to say that by state law, they can turn their babies in to any police officer in Police Department. And I sat there and I said, our people need to know how to deal if someone walks into the station tonight with a baby.
Right.
So I started contacting people throughout this, you know, throughout the accreditation sphere in the Washington and Maryland area, found out nobody else was doing it. Two of us began writing one, writing general order. Then I got the police officers' viewpoint on why, what we, you know, how it needed to be changed. And eventually Tacoma Park and the Maryland State Police were the first two agencies to have a directive on Safe Haven. And that's the kind of thing, if you don't have an accreditation manager, somebody else in the department's going to have to figure it all out and start putting it together on top of their other duties. And that's one of the important things about having an accreditation person, is that they can be looking at those things and working on them with fellow accreditation specialists to come up with a good example.
If I can, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, could I just add something about, my mind came back to me with regard to the data collection and the racial profiling. The law required the Police Departments to capture that data and then report it to a specific agency by a certain date of the following year. That's all it required us to do, you know, was choose what form we were going to give, make our guys use and girls out on the street to capture the information. And then Administrative Services had the duties and responsibilities of, you know, compiling that throughout the year and then secondarily disseminating that, forwarding it. CLEIA requires not only the capturing of this, but a review and an analysis of it. The law doesn't. So CLEIA kind of takes it one step further with an analysis of, you know, again, from a manager's point of view, is your staff acting properly and appropriately when it comes to contact with the community that they're dealing with, whether it's, you know, on traffic stops or whatever. So that would be the added caveat from the CLEIA perspective.
Right, thank you. You know, what I hear is that there's some extra work that's required because of being accredited, but it sounds like it regularizes the process, ensures that the, that things get done that are supposed to get done, and documents it so that we have the information that's necessary if we go to court and make sure that we're following the guidelines and the laws that we should be. And I have one more question, and this is for you, chief, and I don't mean it in a mean way, but I think it's a fair question, given our difficulties in staffing of the uniform positions and the dispatchers, and that's, how are you going to keep this staff?
This position staff?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's a lot easier. I think that, from my perspective anyway, it's, it would be a position that would be best suited to someone who had probably recently left with law enforcement. You know, somebody with a good working knowledge of Police Departments and policies and procedures and the rules associated, preferably someone who had recently retired from an accredited Police Department, i.e. Montgomery County, Prince George's County, whatever. I think that that, this would be a position that would be right up a recently retired police officer's alley.
And I'll just comment that if you find that individual, I hope you give him a gun and a car key and tell him to go out on patrol.
Well, typically, those that are retiring from these larger agencies are able to retire for real. You know, they can actually live off of their retirement and don't necessarily have to find something else to supplement their retirement income. Many of them do it because they're still young and they, I guess, are bored, but don't necessarily have to do it. You know, they have health care that's associated with their retirement, and so on and so forth. But I, from my perspective anyway, I think that the places to target would be these retired police associations. DC's not yet reached the accredited level. They're still working towards that. I don't know how close they are, but DC wouldn't be an association that I would advertise in. I would advertise in Montgomery County or Prince George's County, preferably Montgomery County. You know, that's an agency that became accredited after we did, so it would have been the early 90s. But it's certainly an agency that lives and breathes on a daily basis, 24 hours a day, the CLEIA standards. And that's certainly somebody that we would be looking for. I think it would be much easier to fill that position. First of all, they don't necessarily have to pass a psychological, a pre-employment medical exam and a truth verification, as do our police officer and dispatch applicants.
It's scary, but we won't go there.
I would say that when we had a contractual accreditation person, it was in fact a retired police officer who, for various personal reasons, was no longer able to work on the road as an officer, but had those skills. And I think there are a number of people like that. If you look around at other agencies, a lot of the accreditation people are retired officers. I think the other thing is that it's probably easier to fill an accreditation position because you're working, except for the month before the onsite, you're working eight-hour days, five days a week. And I think, you know...
People don't shoot at you.
And people don't shoot at you. And we don't have a lot of people here who are, you know...
Thank you.
And of course, you know, when you give consideration to the part-time position for the property and evidence room clerk, it's not really, you can't look at this as a trade-off, you know, well, you know, which is more important to you, the accreditation manager position, part-time, or the part-time evidence and property clerk? They really go hand in hand. One feeds off of the other. And if you aren't going to maintain your evidence and property room, that comes with a whole host of problems. But evidence and property is one of the things that the assessors during an onsite... an onsite really focus in on, because they know from experience that evidence and property rooms are pretty much atrocious, that the, most police departments identify some kind of a small, dark corner of, you know, the building to throw all this stuff in. And more often than not, they're not maintained, quite frankly. There's not a regular rotation of the stuff. And for there to be a regular rotation of property and evidence coming in, you have to have somebody that is available to regularly review the records and stay on top of it. And without having someone dedicated to that position, it's not likely that we would be able to pass this mandatory standard during the next onsite. We've made a lot of improvements in our property and evidence room. During the last onsite, not the one we just had, but the one prior to that, which would've been in the spring of '02, we were severely criticized for the, the shape of, of our, not shape physically, but the condition, the overall conditions of our existing property and evidence room. It was absolutely deplorable. It's easy to ignore that. It's at the far end of one of our hallways, but we, like I said, we've made a lot of, lot of improvements, and Denise specifically has worked very hard to bring that room up to the standards of the profession, has identified some money through a local law enforcement block grant to buy some technology to keep us on top of this stuff so that, you know, when there is some kind of a request for information, whatever the case may be, it can easily, easily be spit out through this computer, because, quite frankly, we have a manual system. She's in the process of making the transition to this barcoded system, which will make everyone's life easier. But, unfortunately, the computerized system can't create a human being for us at the same time. You still need someone to operate the system. And again, I think that if we're, if we're able to identify a person to perform in that role part-time, again, someone that has some prior law enforcement experience, that knows what this is all about, can easily learn the, the barcoding system and will easily be able to stay up on top of this. Otherwise, we're destined for failure in that area, and that is a mandatory CLEA standard. We failed that the onsite before last, so...
I wonder if you could elaborate. I know that just in the course of things as they go on, you generally have a couple of officers who are on light duty or restricted duty at any point in time. And you're, they, they're fairly restricted as to what they can do, and I understand from comments that you've made in the past that this may be one of the duties that they've undertaken, is overseeing property, and why that doesn't work anymore.
Well, I think that, yes, we have, first of all, to answer your question, we, there are a variety of capacities that we have identified in the past to, to put temporarily incapacitated police officers or other maybe civilian staffers into these, these different positions. It really is not a bad idea necessarily, because if you take a patrol officer who has spent the bulk of their career, or exclusively their entire career, in patrol, it gives them an exposure, a positive exposure to a different aspect of the police department. It helps them learn, you know, what these requirements are in these different divisions or different subdivisions of a division. We have had officers that have been in light duty capacities perform not only in property and evidence, but also in accreditation, to help out with the accreditation needs. And that has really been important. I mean, it's, it's a total immersion into the system, and most of them, there's so much work involved in that, that sometimes there's a miraculous healing that occurs. And sometimes, you know, if they have a broken bone or something like that, they're going to their physician on bended knee and, and begging for a release to go back to the street, but probably before they're actually physically ready to do that. But, I think it's, while it's good from, for the police department, from my perspective, to rotate them periodically as the need arises into these different positions, I think that it's a big mistake to rely on that. Number one, we would hope that we never have anybody that's in a light duty capacity for any reason, but, you know, if that only happens once every six months, then we'd be talking about six months that the property room would be ignored or only looked at, you know, X number of hours a week, and, and they're still going to... There's a huge learning curve with this, too. So, you know, there's a number of, of reasons why it's not the ideal of situations.
But, all the times I can remember that you've talked to us about where you were in terms of, of staffing, you've talked to us about officers on light duty. So, it does seem like, just in the course of things, you'll have an officer or two on light duty at any particular time. And what would they do in addition to evidence? I mean, what, what else, what other kinds of things would you have them do?
There's a number of things. In addition to property, evidence, accreditation, there's communications, there's dispatch work, there's work in administrative services, there's always any number of things, because, as I said before, the additional hats that everyone in the agency wears, you know, that extra body can certainly help out somewhere. There's never a shortage of work, that's for sure.
Chief Kramer, when you talk about property, are you talking about things like drugs and jewelry and money and other things that are either seized or forfeited?
We have, yes, all of that, basically. Property and evidence, property includes found property, anything that, that the police department brings in.
Weapons?
Everything. We have a split system as opposed to a, a central property system. It's always been like this, this split system that we have. The commander in charge of investigations has always had the responsibility for drugs, drugs-related paraphernalia, things of, of that nature. And then Administrative Services, the, the person in charge of that has always had responsibility for other items of evidence and other property that come into the possession of the police department. So, there are different things that are required depending upon what the property is, whether it's evidence or whether it's found or whatever. In years past, there, the Administrative Services commander, which of course was a police officer position at that point in time, was responsible for and actually conducted their own auctions. Well, we're not auctioneers. We're not in the auction business. We've, Denise has, has recently done some extensive research to identify companies that are out there. Some of them have been around for, for quite a while that will actually reduce the work that you have to do when it comes to disposing of your property. They'll actually come to your site. You identify what property you are ready legally to dispose of, get rid of, whatever, and they will get rid of all this stuff for you. They do the auction. It's an online thing. There's an opportunity for victims of crime to search for property that we may not be able to match up a piece of property with a crime victim. Or, it may be a crime victim from Montgomery County, not necessarily from Tacoma Park, but anybody can search this online website for property that they may have lost or had stolen or whatever. And there's, it's a very good system. You pay a certain percentage to that company, but of course, you're also generating some revenue for your agency as well.
I have, I have a number of questions about this, and I'm sorry to keep the meeting going here, but you mentioned that, that we've had problems in that, that we've, CLEA had raised issues before. We lost the accredit, or ceded the accreditation.
Yes.
And that, and that we've worked to, to overcome some of the problems that we've recognized ourselves. But, it, it concerns me that, you know, we have very valuable things, such as drugs and money and that, and what, how do I get a warm, fuzzy feeling that, that we haven't lost money and lost drugs and that people haven't abused the system?
Well, there's, there's a periodic, again, CLEA requires a couple of different things, one of which is the CEO, the police chief is who they typically refer to as the CEO.
I've talked about before, though. I mean, we had problems. We weren't accredited. CLEA didn't like what we were doing before.
You're, you're asking me to respond to a previous administration?
No, I'm asking, you, you haven't been accredited until just now.
Right.
What kind of safeguards that we had to, to ensure that, that drugs were properly disposed of and money was properly accounted for and the, and the jewelry was properly accounted for and disposed of in a way that is appropriate?
Well, during the, the onsite, prior to the one that we just had, during the onsite in the spring of '02, I had just recently transitioned from the CID commander to the operations commander. So, in the fall of '01, up until '01, I was in charge of drugs. I assure you that there, there was a quarterly report, an inventory that was required. I did that. That was a CLEA requirement. I did that. That went to the, the police chief, and the police chief, again, a CLEA requirement, is required to do periodic unannounced inspections. It's a bit of an audit, if you will. Doesn't mean that I am actually inventorying every single drug paraphernalia item, or I'm taking a random sampling from, you know, the logs in, in his book, in this case. Now, he is in charge of that. Whenever there's a change in control of property and evidence, drugs included, then there is an actual inventory that has to occur to account for every item of evidence. Again, I can't speak to what happened, you know, prior to 2002 or '01. I wasn't in charge of the department then. I had a different responsibility. I was certainly familiar with the CLEA standards and subscribed to them and strictly adhered to those. And I know that since that, this change in administration, that I know what Denise and I know what Richard do when it comes to the handling of drugs. I can produce to you the reports that he has done. There's a...
But, but I guess, I thought we just heard that it was light duty officers and injured officers that were...
Not when it comes to drugs. When it comes to general property and evidence...
Like jewelry and money and weapons?
Yes. What the, what the person that may be performing in this light duty capacity is doing is they're going to an evidence locker and they're getting the paperwork out first, the property impound. If it says that, you know, there's, they found $50 associated with an ounce, well, I don't want to mix up the drugs, because the drugs go to him, money go to her. They found $50 and two pairs of dice. You know, the people fled the scene, they got a call for gambling on such and such a street. The officers got there, everybody fled the area. The only thing found was this $50 and, you know, dice. So, they impound both of those things. This person that may be operating in this part-time capacity, in this light duty capacity, they're opening up this secured evidence locker, they're taking the property impound out, and they're looking to see what's been documented on this impound. First thing they're looking at is $50. Do they have it or do they not? Yes, okay. Dice, do they have it or do they not? They sign it for it. There's a, a chain of custody. The officer that impounds it has to sign off on it, who he got it from, and then the next receiving person has to sign off on that, and so on and so on and so forth. I, I don't know, if you're asking me to give you some kind of assurance that there's never any money that's stolen, I, you know, I can only tell you that we all passed truth verification tests and that we're trustworthy people. I, you know, you, you could suggest that an officer on the street is going to not turn in all the money.
Right.
Unless I have an allegation of something like that, I'll have to assume that they're all doing that.
So, that, so that's not the kind of thing, when you said there were problems in the process?
No, absolutely not. There wasn't a problem as far as anything missing or a shortage of money or, you know, five guns. It wasn't anything like that. It was the fact that it was in disarray, that when they pulled an impound, a property impound, for instance, did a little random thing, then if the impound may have said that this was on shelf, whatever, you know, in what area, and when they went to look for it, it wasn't there, somebody had moved it at some point in time and they hadn't made the correction on the property impound. It took a long time for them to find that property. It was all there. It was all found. It wasn't as if anything was missing. It just was not appropriately catalogued and stored to make it easily retrievable.
All right. Thank you. Sorry it took me so long to get around to the right question. Just one last thing, and that is, we had a, a request, a public information request sometime during this last budget year from Jack Carson regarding, part of it was regarding the disposal of, of property. You've talked about some of the work that's being done now to find ways to dispose of it, but, but I know, you know, years ago, we used to see advertisements in the newsletter for people to come and see if they had any, if their property was, was here, they could look at it and see. And, and we also had advertisements for auto auctions, and we haven't seen those for a number of months. How have you been disposing of property?
Well, since the, the last onsite, we haven't. What we're doing is exploring options, exploring options that will make the whole process a lot easier. This propertyroom.com, for instance, is the company that I was alluding to earlier, that will actually come onsite, and all's we have to do is identify the property that's able to be disposed of or auctioned off or whatever. They will arrive with a truck, load up their truck, and take care of everything else. They'll sell it, you know, give us our cut, they take their cut. That also includes automobiles, so...
How, how do you dispose of the stuff between when you became chief and when we became accredited?
Wait, you haven't disposed of anything yet, right?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, there have been some disruptions.
Yeah, since the last, since the last onsite, the way we dispose of property, property is we'll go in and we'll look at our impounds that we currently have. We have to get a disposition from each officer before we dispose of anything. That's a CLEA standard, is required. Once that happens, then I submit a report to the chief of police, and she reviews it for its accuracy. And, once we do that, when I had a property and evidence person in-house, we would set up a time with, there's a place in Montgomery County, a refuge place in Montgomery County, and we would take the evidence there. They would open up what they call a chute to make sure that it is secure, and we would drop all of the evidence in that chute, and, you know, we would document it that way. In terms of selling and the auctions that you were talking about earlier, it, it, there's a, a big leap for, for those auctions, but there's a lot of effort and time that goes into preparing an auction. And without the adequate staff to do that, you know, it's kind of hard to document and provide the, you know, courts with the necessary paperwork. For instance, I'll give you an example. Before, when we impound cars, when police officers impound cars, there are several steps that they have to take. We have to, the cars impounded, there's paperwork associated with that. The paperwork arrives in my division and Administrative Services. I have exactly 10 days to notify the last registered owner that that vehicle, that we have their vehicle. If that person does not come and pick up their vehicle, and we impound quite a few vehicles on a weekly basis, if that person does not come pick up the vehicle after 21 days, then the police department can do as they like. We can auction it off, we can sell it, you know, we can use it or city use it if, you know, worth our time and effort. Or, we can what we call CS78, which means we can junk the vehicle. Well, if we decide that we want to auction the vehicle, we have to post, our postings, legal postings in Circuit Court, Maryland State Court. In addition to that, we have to spend money to find an auctioneer. We have to spend money to, you know, advertise in the paper and on the internet and all of those different things. things. And then we have to give thirty days before we can even set an auction date because of the notifications that are required. So as you can see, it takes, you know, a lot of time and effort to do that, and currently in terms of handling property and evidence, I'm the only one who does that right now in addition to the other responsibilities and the other hats that we all currently wear.
So for the couple of years that you've been chief, we have just basically junked the cars rather than auctioning them?
That's correct.
How about jewelry?
Jewelry, what's been disposed of, Denise talked about taking this stuff up to a refuse and dumping it, there's the stuff that's been destroyed has been exactly that, junk. Nothing worth wasting our time on trying to sell or auction or it's it's not been worth it. The vast majority of the stuff that that we bring in is junk. You know, every once in a while, we do get some decent vehicles that, you know, will try to do some seizure papers on and go through the court to seize, but nine times out of ten, there's too high of a lien associated with it, ten thousand dollars or more, it's not worth it, whatever. Um, you know, it's, we don't get a whole lot of jewelry. Sometimes, more often than not, the jewelry that does come into our possession is returned to the victim of a crime, a burglary or something like that.
So in that period of time, you haven't had one piece of decent jewelry that's-
Not yet, that has been destroyed.
I mean, my question is, what happened to it? If if there was?
If it if it's of value, it has not been disposed of. Like she said, if the, you know, fashion jewelry or something that belongs to a victim, we'll be returning it. But we haven't gotten rid of any, you know, fourteen karat gold chains or any sterling silver jewelry or any antiques. That is still in the safe. And it has been. We we have maintained it in the safe until we can dispose of it properly, because of course, it's, you know, it's of value. We don't want to release or get rid of or junk anything that's of value, but we need to put the correct systems in place so that we can, you know, do what's necessary, either sell it and bring the money back into the city, you know, or get rid of it in its proper fashion.
Thank you, and I thank my colleagues for your indulgence.
Okay.
That's your last one.
Okay. Are there other questions on this area?
Do you have the open door, Mrs. Thor?
I was just going to say, if you don't mind, Chief, that I know you seem to be somewhat concerned about if you had a part-time property person, you wouldn't have work for a light duty officer. I think if, I think anyone who works downstairs would attest that there are people who come into the station between six in the morning and midnight, seven days a week, are more than happy to get their property back. And if you have a part-time person, that's only going to take care of twenty hours a week. I'm sure that a light duty officer could still be used in the property and evidence function, creating better customer service and, you know, return to people and so that they could still function in that capacity.
I think I would like to go on and go through the rest of the discussion that you intended to have. I think the other thing that I'm very interested in hearing about is recruitment efforts.
Okay, and that's, that topic is also included in the memorandum that's in your packet. As you know, the authorized sworn strength is forty-one, and at the present time, we have thirty-five of those forty-one positions that are filled. Three, three of those positions, we have officers, many of which you have just recently sworn in, are in field training, two are on light duty or restricted duty. Just to give you an update really, or a recap of some of the things that I think are a little bit different and unique that that we have tried to do to attract people to our agency is, as you know, there's a municipal police academy that operates out of Prince George's Community College, and as long as you pay your tuition to that academy, you can put yourself through, presumably will make yourself more marketable upon successful graduation. That's not necessarily always the case, but that's the theory behind it. I have actually gone to that academy on several occasions in an effort to sell our department to them. Use my own experiences, my own career, as perhaps a selling point for for these young men and women that may be there, explaining to them that I too had aspirations to be a police officer and wasn't old enough and and give them my whole life history, believe it or not, in less than three minutes. And, you know, that, it's been helpful and one of the things that the city manager's office has agreed to as a way to, I guess, an additional leg up, if you will, over some of these other police departments in this area, is to not only consider these recruits upon graduation certified officers, which makes them eligible for the hiring bonus, but also to provide them with their, with reimbursement for their tuition. And typically, that tuition is running about thirty-five hundred dollars, provided that they're a Prince George's County resident. If they're from some other county within the state of Maryland, the tuition rate is just slightly higher. But in exchange for that, it's explained to them that they have to sign a four-year contract with us and, you know, there's some some requirements that go along with that. We have posted our position announcements in a variety of venues, trying to attract a more diverse group of people, if you will. The, we ran an ad in Asian Fortune magazine, we ran an ad in, what was the-
Hispanic Weekly.
Hispanic Weekly, thank you. I went down to Columbia Heights in the district and addressed a group of youths at the Latin American Youth Center, again, in an in an in an effort to develop some interest in in the law enforcement field and kind of target, you know, those young people, especially ones that may have bilingual skills. But that was interesting, it certainly had never been done before. There were several people that did eventually admit that they had an interest in police work. It was outside of earshot of their peers, they didn't, you know, you're talking anywhere from seventeen to early twenties, so I think that they were reluctant to admit that they had an interest in police work. But we've advertised on the Maryland Police Chiefs page, which is free. We've advertised with the National Association of Women in Law Enforcement. We have also, what's the-
We have the listing in USA Jobs, which is a governmental job placement website. We've listed in Maywali, which is Mid-Atlantic Alliance of Women in Law Enforcement. We have done a couple of different mailings to, we maintain a-
A list serve.
A list serve, I have a bunch of ladles that I use and I send to Hispanic organizations, approximately a hundred and some Hispanic churches and community organizations, and do that on a regular basis, maybe every eight, nine months.
One of the things that I did at one point, with the help of Gustavo Torres, who's the executive director of CASA, went on Spanish language radio and talked about opportunities for people to become police officers, dispatchers, and the, you know, the fact that they could get a bonus for qualifying as bilingual.
Right.
I don't think anything came out of that, but I do think that that kind of thing raises the profile of the and of the availability of those kinds of jobs in the Spanish-speaking community and I think can be very useful.
Just about everywhere we go, me especially, I'm sure everyone at this table does the same thing, I have a tendency to go to Giant up on Arles for lunch, and people, young people, anybody that seems to be breathing, that stops and talks to me, then I will ask them if they are genuinely interested in working for Giant and that they can actually stay within the same union because Local four hundred represents Giant's Safeway, as do they, the police officers here. But there was a girl at the, young, young girl at the deli counter that expressed some interest one day in taking the the police dispatcher test and hooked her up with one of the recruiters. So, you know, it's it's a never-ending, ongoing thing, and the problem is, is you just, you know, your first impression of somebody doesn't necessarily always pan out. You know, someone who thinks they're interested in law enforcement don't fully grasp the testing process that is typically associated with coming on to a police department, and although they will sign this statement of employability saying that they haven't done this, this, this or this, when it comes time to sit them down with either a polygraph examiner or computer voice stress person, there's a little bit more information that is typically revealed, more often than not disqualifies them from our process. And and that's unfortunate, but that's the reality. And it's not just an experimentation with marijuana, you know, there are acceptable standards with regard to that as, you know, set forth by the Maryland Police Training Commission. It goes a little bit beyond that, you know, sometimes people have acknowledged tattoos that they have on their body that are typically associated with a gang affiliation. Others have experimented, so they say experimented, with hallucinogenic type drugs, that's an automatic disqualification per the standards of the Training Commission. So, you know, it's, and and as I've said before to counsel, it's a very, very, very competitive area that we're located in. I think that, I'm confident that by expanding the Take Home Car Program, it's no secret, I I think we all agree that that is a major hindrance to us when it comes to recruiting and retaining in the past, and I think by by expanding our Take Home Car Program that that certainly is going to avail us to a wider variety of candidates, that more people will be interested in us.
I guess my bottom line question is, of the thirty-five officers, are these all officers that to the best of your knowledge are going to stay? Does the thirty-five number include anybody who said they're not going to stay? And what are the prospects for getting to what level of staffing realistically during the year? Will we be, will we get to thirty-eight by January? Will we be thirty-eight by next June? Will we be, you know, how long to take to fill the positions? Realistically?
Yeah, I mean, you're kind of asking me to predict the future. I mean, I I wish that I could tell you with any certainty what was going to happen. Let me answer the first part of your question first. Of the thirty-five, how many of those do I know will still be here or expect to stay? I count as one of those thirty-five. I have announced the fact that I'm going to be retiring, so very shortly, you will be down to thirty-four. That answers that part of it. We have some certified officers that are currently in our process, one of which we've already washed out. He's from another state and apparently there was no truth verification that was required in this other state, and when he took ours, you know, things didn't work out for him. I I can't really predict how these certified officers are going to pan out. We have a good ten or so that are actively closely being looked at right now, the background phase, and when there's a few other steps that are finished up, then the background investigator will make a recommendation to me, I'll review the file and make a determination based on what I'm seeing whether or not they're going to go on to the final phase of the testing, which is truth verification, physical and psychological. You know, I remain optimistic that we're going to get our numbers back up again, but I I don't know whether there's anyone else that's going to go somewhere else or or leave, just like I don't know if tomorrow I'm going to have, you know, ten people from Laurel that express interest in wanting to come work here, I don't know that. I think that we have to continue with our aggressive recruiting initiatives and continue to find innovative ways to attract people, whether they're certified and and have previous law enforcement experience or not. Whether we've got to send five people to a police academy, you know, whatever it takes, that's what we'll have to do.
Can I just add something to that?
Go ahead.
I I was particularly pleased that one of the officers that I swore in recently is someone who had been here and had gone to the District of Columbia and had come back.
Yes.
Which tells tells me that we are, at least in that instance, being competitive with the other departments. The other thing I wanted to ask you, you said you've got currently nine candidates under consideration. You've told us this in the past, I can't remember, of the, of the number of people who start in the pipeline, how many people actually pass all the tests and end up being hired? For example, of the nine, if that was, if if the experience with those nine is typical, how many would you expect are going to end up being hired?
Probably less than, let's just round it off to ten, probably less than ten percent. There's, our hiring standards are very strict.
And I'm glad they are.
Yes, and I'm not willing to back off of that, you know, not only does the Training Commission have these standards that you must adhere to, they will not certify an officer if you don't say that they meet all of their standards. But of course, you know, the department has standards too, and for the most part, the agency, our our standards mirror those of the Training Commission, but, you know, I I've said it before and I can't help but say it again, you know, we can't compromise our standards. You know, we've had a really good track record over the years, when you look at the number of liability lawsuits, people who are suing the police department, you know, you don't even need all of the five fingers on one hand to count them up over the last five or more years, you know, they're they're that small. And I think that that has a number of things to do with it. The fact that we have some some pretty strict rules, policies and procedures that we follow within the police department that we hold, we as administrators, hold our people accountable to, and of course, now we're accredited, but just as importantly, the individual employee, you know, they they have very high work ethics and standards and, you know, they're they're not renegade cops. So, you know, it's, you can, well, Carol, what are some of the numbers? I'll give you an idea when it comes to testing, just a written exam. We can line up some fifty applicants that have expressed interest in taking a police officer test, and out of those fifty that have expressed interest, when we tell them the date, the time and the location that the test is going to be given, you might see twenty or twenty-five of them show up, and then an even larger percentage that are going to fail the test. So, you know, from day one, you start weeding these people out. Either they don't meet the minimum standards as set forth by the Training Commission, or they reveal something that automatically disqualifies them, or they're good up until the testing part and then they fail the test. You know, I I've not personally kept the numbers to answer your question, but I know that the number of people that are weeded out in in any any phase of the process is really high.
So your sense is that of the people who start and through the process, ninety percent don't make it?
I think that's a fair assumption, yeah.
Okay. Then I guess, and I understood my comments last week got taken the wrong way.
I wasn't here, I don't-
I was, I was told that some of the officers expressed concern that I was that I was interested in eliminating three positions in the police department, or some such comments to that effect. My only interest is this, I don't think we're going to fund more than thirty-eight officers, but I do your math, and you've got thirty-five and you're leaving makes thirty-four, and you're going to maybe approve one in ten, that gets me to thirty-five. I feel like the council should fund, and I don't mean eliminate the positions, but fund in the budget thirty-eight officers, and which gives, leaves some money in the budget for flexibility, and I'll not say, tell you what I encourage you to do, what I encouraged you to do last year, which is look at the use of Montgomery County Police for late night shifts, not totally run late night shift, but for at least one of the late night shifts to allow Tacoma Park officers to fill, better fill daytime shifts, because I think community policing is more likely done during the earlier part of the day and not between midnight and four o'clock in the morning, whilst we're now meeting our local officers and waiting for somebody to drive by and say hi and have a conversation with us. I would also like, you know, people to look at, and we've talked a lot about high crime areas and how to get more- areas and how to get more bang for the buck. You know, is it possible to hire, for example, a Montgomery County officer to do a three-hour shift during the twilight hours in a place like around the metro or, you know, in Tacoma Langley area? We could talk about where our hot, where our hotspot needs are, so that we target people for limited number of hours who provide extra support in areas that have the highest need without the council trying to say, "Well, I want to fill, I want to cover that spot." But the only way we can do it under the current system is to hire a full-timer, as opposed to saying, "Can we cover the spot we really want some extra bang for?" And it's probably wrong word to use, but we want the extra impact on without hiring a full-timer. So I'd like, I'd like the department to look at some other flexible ways of providing more coverage and at times of the day maybe more intense coverage. But I think the council ought to fund something on the order of 38 positions this year, and we ought to think about, you know, turning some of that money either back in terms of the taxes, or looking at how that money could help fund some of the other things that we've, that we've expressed interest in. You know, there's the CCSA program, there's a bunch of stuff sitting on the reconciliation. And I think, I would like to, you know, put on the table certainly that we, that we fund fewer than 41 this year. And that does not mean to take them out, you know, to say we're only going to have 38 officers permanently, right? Anything else, but just recognize that you're not going to go probably past 35 or 36. And what I want to avoid frankly in the budget is knowingly funding three positions, which then the money gets absorbed into the general fund. And we know we're not going to spend it, but it winds up in our budget, and then we get to just make interesting decisions as the year goes on. I think we ought to tax what we think we're going to spend, or at least more closely to what we're going to spend. And since I know I'm not going to spend all that money, I'd rather tax for a little bit less of it.
Do you have a sense that it's hopeless to get to 41 officers this year?
No.
I just want to say that the, the people that I talk to all the time are kind of of two different minds. And one is they're, they're really frustrated that they don't see a police officer in the neighborhood, and they're willing to throw into town. But I think the greater number of people want the police department to function, and they're willing to pay what it costs to have the police department function. And they want all 41 officers out there either driving around in their cars, or riding around on the bicycles, or walking around on the sidewalks that everybody else wants. And, and that's, that's what I hear, is that, that, you know, people, if, if we're going to have our own police department, we need to fund it properly, and we need to do what it takes to recruit the officers. If that means, you know, cars for everybody, then we should accelerate the car purchases. And to find the things that we need to do to make sure that we retain police officers and that we're a top choice for, for the recruits that you're talking to. I understand what Mark is saying, that we don't want to have a budget that's bigger than it has to be, and if there really is a sense that we can't do that, that, that maybe we shouldn't do that. But then I guess the other side of that is that we're kind of deficit spending a little bit this year as, as well. And so if we ended up not spend, if we'd ended up not filling the extra three positions, it would just put us in the long run in a better position with, with our funds. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's correct. Obviously, if we, you know, fund at full strength levels and the positions are not filled, basically the money returns to the general fund. Chief, I kind of anticipated Councilmember Elrich that you might raise this issue. So Chief and I did have an opportunity to talk about it this afternoon, and I guess with your indulgence, we'd like to just kind of spend a little bit more time talking about it in preparation for the reconciliation. One of the things I would just note, and it doesn't mean we can't do it, let me be clear about that, is we tend to budget the salary line item at full, assuming full strength, and we do likewise with the overtime. Obviously, and I know this has been a concern of Councilmember Siemens, but I mean, it's a reality of life that sometimes if you're running below full strength, your overtime accounts are going to go over. What I'd like the opportunity to do is to spend some time with the chief, and particularly Captain Corsi, given that operations is the area that we're primarily talking about, kind of work through what might happen to the overtime numbers to make sure that we're not pulling too much for salaries and don't have any flexibility in the overtime, so the overall budget is short. I think something could come out, I'm not saying that it could not.
I mean, I, first of all, I think, I'm interested in projections, but they should certainly have to be based on the last couple of years, since not having had 35 officers, we shouldn't be guessing at what the impact of not having 35, not having 41 officers would be. We shouldn't know what the overtime impact is, so we should be able to do a real analysis rather than a hypothetical analysis.
Yeah, I'm saying we could gather that data, we didn't have the time to do that.
And I'm not asking the council to do this tonight. I see this as a reconciliation item, not as let's do it tonight item. And the answer, a little bit of Colin's concern, I mean, one of the things I see being able to do with this, for example, is accelerate the purchase of cars, because I agree that the take-home cars are probably a main attractant to being able to retain people. So if we're going to be short of officers, I'd rather put the money, some of the money, into something which accelerates the purchase of vehicles, so that a year from now, we're in a better shot of getting to 41, and we have all the tools which the department says it needs to get us to 41. So I'm just saying, this may be an opportunity for us to exercise some flexibility, and if we could do it, I'd like to do it. But I'm, I'm not one to put things on the table tonight and say yes or no.
I think when we've done that in the past, if I recall, the council has also made a pledge that if, you know, the, the employment market should change, and we actually have an opportunity to hire over the number that we thought that we would, that we basically explicitly give the chief over hire authority all the way up to 41, and I guess past, because she currently has over hire past 41. I, I would be willing to put it on the reconciliation list for further discussion, but only if the, if we would be willing to commit that that would not in any way restrict any hiring that we did, that if we some, by some miracle, were able to actually get up past 41, that the council would provide the funding for those officers. Now, I don't expect it's going to happen on day one of the fiscal year, so you're not talking about three additional people for a whole fiscal year. You probably would not, if, if we were to, were to hit on the, the miracle recruiting tactic, that you push a button and a fully qualified.
We'll market it.
Recruit peers in front of you. If we could figure out how to do that, it would still take us probably most of a fiscal year to get up to 41. So those last three officers wouldn't be full year. And actually, the first ones wouldn't be full year, so I think over time, mathematically, it would probably come out the same way. But I would like to assure the department and assure the public that if we did something like that, we were not intending to reduce this, the police department. And that in order to make that clear, we would commit to funding any number of police officers they were able to recruit up to the 41.
I, that's fine with me, I just think that we ought to look realistically at the numbers. I mean, the point is, we're, we're at, we're in May now, halfway through the month, you know. We're going to be down to 34 very shortly. If you got one out of the 10.
Actually, not until the next fiscal year.
Well, it's still pretty shortly, I don't think it's a too long way. If we got one out of the 10, we're back to 35, and that means everybody else goes through a process again. And I just, you know, that process is not a quick process. It has not been a quick process for anything we've done so far. So I feel even if you got to 41, the average number over the course of the year is not going to be much better than 38 in the best of circumstances. So I mean, I'm not doing this, and I hope nobody considers this as an effort to handicap the department from getting to 41. I just want to do some better things with the money if it's available.
I'm totally open-minded to a purchase, but one thing I would like to keep in mind then is that if we, let's say we funded it to 38 officers with the understanding that if we got 41, that'd be great, and we'd hire them, and we would, we would spend it out of our, of our general fund and further spend that down. What would happen then would be, next year, to maintain those officers, as the, as the mayor has so often pointed out, you know, we're adding a lot of bodies, and it would make for a more significant tax rate jump than to catch up for those officers. And at the same time, we would have further depleted the, the reserve by the amount that those officers would, would cost us. So we would be facing both, you know, a little bit bigger jump then in the, in the tax rate, and a need to replace some of that reserve money, I would assume, to maintain the city's strength. And so, one thing I would say to that is, is as we're talking about this in terms of the reconciliation, that if we're going to do that, I would really like to, to see that we ensure that we do spend the money on things that will ultimately broaden our tax base.
I'd also like to add one additional thing. I said when we started talking about the budget, that I had, of the proposals that were being made for expenditures, I had the most concern about adding new staff. And there was proposal for a new code enforcement officer in housing, and I asked that that be put on the reconciliation list, not because I didn't think it was a good thing to do, but because I thought that we should give added scrutiny to any request for additional staff. And I guess I, I feel the same way here. I would like us to give additional scrutiny. I think, Chief, you've made a, a good case for both of the part-time people. In terms of the accreditation officer, it seems to me it's less of a, of an increase, because I know we've had people doing this in the past. We've had people, as you mentioned, we had the police chief, the deputy police chief doing some of it. We've had people on contract doing it. We've been working, Carol, time and a half to do it. I know we haven't been paying her, but we've been working her extra hours. And I am willing to say that accreditation is worth investing funds in, and I think you've made a case that it is a prudent thing to do to add a half person. I think that the other request for the property management is still something I'd like to have some more discussion about, and I'd like to put that on the reconciliation list. I guess I'm not convinced yet that it's not something that couldn't be done. In, in answer to Councilmember Siemens' questions, I think you made the point that we are dealing with the property that we take in in a responsible way, it's just not as orderly as it should be. And I, I guess I'm not convinced at this point that we need another half-time person, that we can't do as we've done in the past to have people on light duty take care of that. And so I'd like to put on the, that on the reconciliation list. That doesn't mean we're not going to do it, it just means that at the end of the budget process, we look at everything on the reconciliation list and do what we can do with that. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts about this.
Should I move on to the next?
Sure.
Okay. At this time, I'll ask for Captain Corsi and Denise Bullock to answer Councilmember Siemens' earlier question about the mobile data computers.
About a, about a year and a half ago, in January or so, we had done some planning on the conversion of the modem, the type of modems that the mobile computers were using. At that time, we had a number of the CDPD modems, which was what we were using at the time, had, had gone bad on us. And we upgraded those to EVDO, which is a technology that Verizon supports, and that was the system we were using to interface with the park police network. There was, there was going to be time between that time and the end of the year when we knew the CDPD system were going to no, no longer be serviced by, by Verizon. There was plenty of time to, to make a decision as to upgrading all of the computers to EVDO or to switching to the county system. The process of switching to, to the county system, which was what had been understood to be the goal, the, the end goal, took apparently longer than we had anticipated, in, in that they, they took a while before they actually finalized contracts with Sprint, the carrier that they chose to use. And, and I believe they use a, is it CDMA?
Yes, CDMA.
The technology that they use. So we knew we had the six machines still running on EVDO, and that that would carry us, carry us through to the, to the end of that year with the CDPD system still running. The accreditation push came later in the year, and efforts at, at getting the needed changes to switch over to the county system were quite frankly not our priority. And then the beginning of the year caught us, and, and we weren't able to get those systems in place to switch over to the county system in a, in a timely manner. And it's the, the work on that is still ongoing. But there are six EVDO systems still working on, on the park system.
The thing that concerned me about that is that, you know, your office came to this council and saying how these computers were very important, and we needed to purchase the computers at great expense, not only purchase the, the computers, but also upgrade the electrical systems in the car and pay for installation of this equipment, and that it was to enhance the policing in our city. And the council made the policy decision that we would do that and fund that. And then you tell me that it wasn't a priority to keep those things functioning, and that the officers on the street don't have those, that equipment, which you had testified to this council was critical to their work. I find that very disconcerting.
It's not a situation that we were, were pleased with facing.
There was a period of time as well, Captain Corsi and I have worked on this effort jointly, and there was a period of time where the funds for this PC, PS, for the Public Safety 2000 project, you know, we, we had made requests on, on different occasions as to, you know, where the, the funding for the project was, because there were supposed to be additional monies in the CIP. And, and to, to make the purchase, we would, we would have to, you know, know where those funds were. And I believe it was around the end of, I'm not going to say the end, maybe September of last year, where those monies had actually been confirmed to be spent. And that was probably in the, in the year of September of 2005, then shortly after that, that was accreditation.
I don't, I don't understand how something as significant as that, whether it was a need for money or just a, a management decision to reverse a previous request and a previous decision of this council, how that was done without this council knowing about it.
How, what was done without council's knowledge?
How the decision was made not to make the purchases necessary to keep the equipment working. You know, if it was a shortage of funds, it seems like a reasonable thing to at least let the council know. If it was a decision that the, the policy decision that this council had made to have those computers and available for the patrol officers, if there was a decision to reverse that policy decision, that this council wasn't informed about it.
Well, I think that, you know, there were a number of things that happened, and again, some of this fell to the office of the chief too. You know, there were, there were deadlines that were made very clear to us, that, you know, by the end of December or certain whatever, that this service would no longer be available. And we were faced with a number of decisions that we were consulting with the county on, we were consulting with the park on, their, the contract with park, there were a number of different things. It's, it's really not easy to just lay it all out to you here, it's actually very involved. There were, under the service contract with the park police, there were licenses that were given to us. And one of the questions was, if we were to transfer over to the county police system, are these licenses going to transfer with this, or do we have to give these up? You know, there were a number of things that needed to be considered, but just as many other things were happening at the same time, preparation for an onsite for accreditation. There were all kinds of things happening. And, you know, all of them, as well as me, needed to focus on the onsite. We knew that there was this deadline looming for the, the CDPDs, and that service would be cut off. But, you know, there were decisions that I needed to make about that. Was I going to make this transition and go with this, these EVDO? I guess, in essence, it's a data networking type of thing. And quite frankly, I didn't have the time to devote to doing the research that I needed so that I felt that I was making an informed decision about this. so that I felt that I was making an informed decision about this. And of course, the deadline continued to loom closer every day, but so did our onsite and the preparation for that. There were a number of things, and I think that, again, going back to the need for these part-time positions, and the fact that we all wear these varied hats and have these extra duties and responsibilities, serves as distractions for things that are priorities.
I'm not going to second-guess your decision.
No, no.
I just would like the city manager to have better line of communications with the council, so that we know when these kinds of things are going to happen and not be surprised.
Well, and clearly, I mean, that's, I'm not trying to protect anyone here, but, you know, I've never shied away from my responsibility, and, you know, that's, I didn't really tell her that. You know, there were all these other things going on, and quite honestly, I didn't tell her that, you know, "By the way, I'll remind you that council approved the purchase of this and the moving forward on this. We haven't done anything on it because of this, this, and this." You know, oftentimes, I don't have those kinds of minutes in the day. Perhaps I need to carve out, you know, my time better in the day to keep her informed about that, and I certainly can't expect her to follow up with me. She relies on her department heads to keep her appropriately informed of things. But, you know, we all agree that the computers are an integral part of the police officer's work in the field, to give them better access to information and to speed things up overall. And we're doing the best that we can at this point in time to make sure that they have the technology that is available to us, so that they'll have it out there in the field. But at the same time, we don't want to duplicate and waste money on purchases of things when, you know, pay for things twice when we can do it in one fell swoop kind of thing, and save us money overall.
Can I clarify one thing? I'm not sure, Terry, is your concern about switching over from the park police to the Montgomery Police, or is your concern about the time it's taken to implement the switch over?
The time it's taken and the, and kind of what happened to get us into this position where the equipment that we have is non-functional. I mean, it's good for Minesweeper.
It sounds like if we make the switch over, that we will be ahead of the game from where we were before. But I would agree with you in terms of the time, but I wouldn't, I think switching over is a good idea.
When we make the switch, we will be at the endpoint. We will be where we want to be. Fully a third of the machines are currently working on the old system, on the park system, under the EVDO cards.
Are those just main staff?
An option could have been to have upgraded all of them to EVDO, in which case we would have been purchasing modems that we would then be throwing away.
Discarding, yes.
Because we would be switching over to the county system down the road. I guess we couldn't have, we didn't predict accurately how long it would take to bring us up to speed on the county system.
I would agree that without micromanaging the police department, that it would be good to have a heads-up on the kinds of things that people might ask about, where it might make you look bad, basically, that somebody says, "Oh, well, they don't have computers in the cars. Oh, my gosh, what does that mean?" And so the question I want to ask you is, only a third of the computers are functional. What does that mean? Does that mean if you're a patrol officer driving down the street and you see a suspicious vehicle, that rather than typing something into your computer and getting a response on whether or not it's a stolen vehicle or anything like that, you radio that into dispatch and they communicate that information to you?
Very accurate, yes.
So still have access to the information?
Right.
So what's the losses? We don't have, every individual can't do it as rapidly. That might discourage people from doing as many runs as they might.
Tying up the radio frequency.
Tying up the radio.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's kind of the extent of it.
It's not as if we don't have access to the information.
Right.
It's not necessarily available to all of the officers in the field, but certainly if...
Well, it's not necessarily available to all the officers, but it is to everyone who has a radio, though, right?
It is available to all the officers in the field.
But I mean off of the computer.
Off of the computer. So it's inconvenient for a while.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Have you covered the things that you wanted to cover? Do we have something still left on the list?
Well, there's, Councilmember Siemens had asked something about the organized crime vice control, and I think in essence what his question was, although he'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, is the VNI positions, we've talked about this in the past, they remain vacant, because the staffing needs, obviously the priority, is in patrol and CID. Nothing has changed as far as what I said before, that the duties and responsibilities for illegal drug sales distributions and things of that nature continue to fall into the bailiwick of the CID investigators. There are general investigations, responsible for general investigations, which really runs the gamut of all the Part I offenses. And of course, as we all know, the drug investigations can be very lengthy and time-consuming. Obviously, our goal is to get to a point in our staffing level where we can specifically fill those VNI slots, because we're going to derive a benefit from that, because as I said before, one will work with a street-level anti-crime team, and the other will work with a drug task force. And of course, by being a part of those different groups, they bring a lot of friends with them into the city. It's not just two people that are addressing drug issues. We have not turned our back on drugs in the city. CID works when necessary with other agencies and asks for the assistance of other agencies. They just recently worked a major investigation in Ward Six, where they were successful in shutting down a house. It was a nuisance property where there was an awful lot of drug activity going on out of there. But that investigation finally came to a close with the service of a search warrant after several months. So, you know, we're not ignoring, we're not turning our back on this, but at the same time, it's not the only priority of CID. They handle other Part I offenses.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to put a different foot forward, if you will, and congratulate you on the work that you have done. I really was delighted to see, you know, what took place on, was it Cole Avenue?
Yeah, it was great.
Yeah. And that's something we haven't seen enough of over the past few years. I know that without the VNI, that it's been staffed, it's difficult to do, but I don't think that, given that you have the responsibility to enforce the laws, I don't think you can completely ignore it, and I have felt like it has been in some past years. And I feel very encouraged to see the work that you're doing now, not just on Cole, but seeing progress, seeing changes, seeing things being paid attention to, that encourages me and pleases me. I really appreciate it.
Accreditation.
And I was just going to, I was also going to mention that I also appreciate the traffic law enforcement that has really, I think, reached some new heights recently. And I think the community appreciates that. I get the positive feedback from the residents of Ward Four, that they are pleased to see the patrol officers watching the stop signs, actually stopping people when they do run the stop signs. It was funny, today I had a call from a individual from another ward who was on the phone with me complaining about never seeing police patrols in their neighborhood, and I heard a siren and looked out, and officer had stopped a car right in front of my house. So I'm glad you're paying attention to Ward Four.
They were telling they were in Ward Four. If I can move through, that's, I think that should address the issues that some members of council had raised previously, and hopefully will address the increases in the police department's budget as well. As the city manager indicated, there is an additional 15-5, I believe it is, that was thrown into, I'm pretty sure it was a contract line in the office of the chief. As required per the union contract for the police officers, there is a promotional process that will have to occur in FY '07. And the vendor that we have typically used in all these years previously announced that the rates will be increasing, however, not dramatically, and the odds are real good that she'll still continue to be the cheapest one around. But, you know, we'll have to bring that to council for their approval when the time comes for that. Shall I move on to the special revenue section at this point in time?
Can I ask you a couple of quick questions? Looking at your budget summary, I noticed that between the monies budgeted in '06 and the money spent, there's differences, and I'm assuming in most cases, that's because of unfilled positions. But I also noticed under operations, the monies that are estimated to be spent exceed the amounts budgeted, and I assume that's because you try and keep operations fully staffed and the additional expenditures are for overtime. Am I correct?
Yeah, the chief and I actually talked about this this afternoon. We need to look at it a little bit more closely, but thus, our assumption is that operations is the primary consideration, and we pull from other units, particularly CID, as required. But we'll check that.
And the reason it goes over the budget is because you're paying overtime to do that?
It would actually be what we anticipated, and we can do a little more research in there, but where we actually assume people would be when the fiscal year started, where their salaries were budgeted, and then over the course of the fiscal year, depending on where that person is actually assigned, their salary will go to whatever function he or she is actually working in, not necessarily where they're budgeted.
Right. Because if you look at criminal investigations, for instance, the budgeted and the estimated is significantly lower. So that could exactly be the case.
The other question that I had, looking at personnel, is between budgeted '06 and budgeted '07 for personnel and administrative services is about $76,000, which exceeds the 30, your estimated 35 for the half-time person. And it also exceeds the percentage increase, at least in the other areas, and so I'm wondering if, what that would be in terms of administrative services personnel.
Yeah. When did we add the crossing guard? There was an eight crossing guard.
Okay. How much is a crossing guard for a year after, oh, I guess, this is gross, right? This is gross before we offset it with rebates. So how much is a crossing guard?
I don't recall right offhand.
I think it would be helpful to get a little bit more information on both of those.
I'm sorry, one was the crossing guard salary? Is that correct?
Yeah, the crossing guard salary, and also just looking at the, separating out the $76,000 increase between budgeted '06 and budgeted '07 in administrative services. And the other question that I had was about the amount in, for operations for personnel over and above what was budgeted for '06.
Yeah, we'll be happy to check that. My suspicion would be there's two things going on in the personnel costs for administrative services. One is the, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this is where the salary for the proposed evidence officer is budgeted.
Yeah, that's about $32,000.
Right. And if you'll recall, while there was an additional crossing guard that started work during this fiscal year, that was something the council actually approved after the budget was adopted, because we anticipated there would be salary savings. I didn't bother coming back to the council and getting a budget amendment, so I can verify that, but I'm pretty much 99.9% sure that that's, the difference is primarily those two positions and any salary increases that employees in that division would normally receive based on their performance.
But if the FY '06 budget hasn't, I'm looking, I'm comparing budgeted '06 to proposed budget '07, so the actual expenditure shouldn't affect that. I mean, I don't want to beat it to death right now, but maybe you could just sort of give me that later.
Okay.
Okay, so you have a couple of things in the capital section?
Yes, I do. Let's see. The patrol cars, $114,940. Let me know if you need further explanation on that. I don't believe that we do. I think that that's already been addressed. There's a balance, a rollover balance of about $161,000 for this police communications equipment. That's the original PS 2000 project that started years ago. And the other thing that the police department has is $20,000 for the evidence facility, which is Bay Three at Public Works. A number of years ago, Public Works agreed to give us a bay that, paint bay in essence is what it was, that they weren't using, so that CID could use it as an evidence facility. They have been doing that. Council agreed to set aside a certain amount of money, a small amount of money, so that CID could do some internal upgrading to convert that bay to a more conducive work atmosphere. We have rolled it over the last couple of fiscal years, because the original plans that accompanied the community center showed an evidence facility going under the gym and all that kind of stuff. So I said, "Okay, guess what? We're going to sit on this. Why spend this money on Bay Three when we're going to have something modern?" And so we've kept, for obvious reasons, this $15,000 in that. Shall I move on to the special revenue?
Is it 15 or 20?
I'm sorry. It was 15. The door is broken, and it's going to cost about $5,000 to replace the door. So the director of Public Works has estimated it'll cost $5,000 to fix the door. It's a huge roll-up door, so there was an extra $5,000 that was put in for that.
My question is, what do we do now, not having that? What do we do for processing the vehicle?
Oh, we have it. It just has to be manually raised.
That's the door, but what's the other $15,000 for?
To make appropriate interior renovations, so that it's more conducive to an actual evidence facility. In other words, there's no...
Get rid of the rats and things like that?
Well, no. But one of the things would be to remove an oil storage facility that Public Works has in there, an oil tank or drum or something, currently sits inside their facility, which is secured. There's no ventilation system in there. It's for those types of improvements. Some would perhaps to make a processing area above, storage below, you know, things of that. It's not much money. They're not going to get too far, trust me when I tell you that. Should I move on to special revenue?
Go ahead.
Okay. Also in the packet, there's a number of funds, grants, that come to the police department. And outlined here, there's $9,000 that is CDBG monies that we applied for, CSafe applied That $9,000 is applied to the salary associated with the community organizer who works in the international corridor on the Montgomery County side. You're asking yourself, who in the world would work for $9,000? Nobody. So there's another $25,000 of grant money.
You're talking to a bunch of people who work for less than that.
Yeah, here, but in your real life.
You don't.
So, anyway, there's another chunk of grant money that comes through the Montgomery County Collaboration Council that will supplement that $9,000, and that's $25,000 for, to total about $34,000 for that Montgomery County organizer's salary. The next item there on the list is the CSafe Coordinator. That's the money that comes from the state in the amount of $93,562. It pays for the program director's position and related operating costs. A little tiny portion of that $93,000, about $11,000 or $12,000, helps to pay for the health benefits for the program director and the two community organizers. We were able to negotiate an increase in that grant money about this time last year. The next item is some local law enforcement block grant monies, the amount of $13,000. This money is, we have to give them an idea upfront of, you know, some of the things that we're going to use this money for. We're not necessarily completely tied into it. We're not necessarily completely tied into it. We do have a little flexibility with it. But it's tentatively earmarked for improved evidence processing supplies, sector-specific meetings aimed at building partnerships, and in-car video camera system.
How many in-car video cameras do you think you're gonna get in this room?
Not too many.
One or two, I don't think.
Yeah, it's not many. If you look at the next item, which is the COPS Technology Grant, that's the largest grant that we have. It's $98,000, just under $99,000. That's where we're gonna get the bulk of the in-car video cameras with that money. There's a little bit of a typo there with the description of the project under the COPS Technology Grant. That will actually, that money goes to the in-car video car cameras. The department transitioning from a 35-millimeter camera system to a digital camera system to include a server to save, you know, the images on, upgrading some equipment and communications, the voice recorder, as well as, oh, evidence processing equipment for CID, evidence drawing cabinet and stuff. There's a Burn Memorial, a JAG grant, $19,457,000. Oh, wow, this is really disjointed. Do you remember what that money was for? This is what it says before. I think they got messed up when there was some cutting and pasting going on. I don't remember specifically what that money was earmarked for. Can certainly let you know-
I think mostly in-car video cameras.
Yeah. That will get us some additional in-car video cameras. And then the last item there is a Homeland Security Grant. That's a pass-through grant from Montgomery County to us. And again, tentatively, we had to give them some kind of an idea of how we would use this money. There, you know, are some restrictions on its use. And a way to expand our K-9 program in an effort to recruit and retain personnel. We thought that what we could do is use this money to obtain an explosive detection dog as well, a cross-frame dog in patrol tactics and drug, or bomb detection.
So this would be in addition to the two dogs that we have now?
Right. Yeah. When we had a bomb scare not too long ago, a handful of months back, we had to call in a couple of different outside agencies to assist. Who was the bomb dog that responded to that? Was it Capitol?
National Agent.
Did I age? Metro Transit and maybe Montgomery County. Going to two or three other agencies who were out for it. But basically, that's, that covers, I think, the bulk of what the police department has.
How many bomb threats do we get?
Not a whole lot, but the dog can also sniff firearms and ammunition. And that's a growing field in law enforcement with that type of detection.
We've talked about workload and taking on more than we have the people to handle. Is there, you know, the fact that we have a dog means that we need a handler. And I know that with the current dogs, that it changes the dynamics of a patrol officer to have a dog.
A little bit, but it doesn't necessarily have to. Not to interrupt you, but I should have emphasized that all of our K-9 handlers are assigned to a patrol team. And they too have duties and responsibilities typical of a regular beat officer and handle calls for service and so on and so forth. And that this K-9 handler would do the exact same thing. The initial loss would be to training, you know, once the dog was acquired and the handler identified whoever it is within the department. If that's the way we go, we identify the handler, pair them up with the dog, and then send them out for training. I forget how long the training is, four weeks. That would be the initial loss to the agency. And then upon their return, they would be assigned back to the patrol team that they came off of and would, you know, work their normal shift with their patrol team, following the schedule, rotating with them and handling calls for service. The main difference is they've got a dog now.
So this would be all funded through grant?
Yeah. The bulk of it, yeah.
Per domino.
Yeah, the purchase of the dog as well as the training associated, this grant will cover the cost of that. The only thing that wouldn't be covered would be future costs, future years. There's, the union has negotiated for handler pay. It's not that much. I don't know offhand what it is. But anyone who is a K-9 handler gets a certain amount of extra money because they, of the care and whatever goes with it. I have cats, I don't know what goes with that.
Does the grant cover, does the grant cover the cost of maintaining the dog, the food, the vet bills?
No, this grant money, this $15,000 is gonna cover the cross-training of the animal, the purchasing of the animal, and the handler to go through the training with the animal.
Yeah, I also have some concerns about, we keep adding dogs. And I, you know, certainly, we want to have the dogs available that we need, but for a long time, we didn't have any. And then we had one, and then we have two, and now it looks like we're gonna have three. And, I mean, we can't provide every officer a dog.
No, we can't. We definitely can't.
Part of it also is the lifespan of the dog, too. One of our dogs is getting close to probably the end.
But that's how we ended up with the second dog. We got another dog because the first dog was getting old. And then when the first dog retired, then we got a dog to replace that. So we morphed from one dog to two dogs. And I don't want to use that same rationale to morph from two dogs to three dogs. I mean, we, perhaps what we need to do is think about how many dogs we actually need, make a case for that number of dogs, and then have that number of dogs rather than just keep sort of adding them incrementally as money for dogs comes in.
Sure. There's also a variety of other security-type equipment that we could purchase for them.
Okay, as I said, I'm not opposed to dogs. It's just that nobody's ever come to the council and said, we've done this study and the department needs X number of dogs. And this is how we're gonna get them and train them.
Since this is coming from a grant, I just, is this something that this council decides? I mean-
Well, we should decide, I mean, it seems to me we decide whether or not we want this kind of grant. I mean, there's, it's not mentioned that this was preparation of a vehicle for a dog either, right?
I'm sorry.
A dog, vehicle has to be prepared for dogs, since the dog just doesn't rock around and call like another passenger.
It will depend on the contract we get for the dog at the time we get the contract.
Well, I was just gonna say, when you mentioned what the grant covered, I didn't hear the vehicle conversion. How many dogs does Montgomery County have?
I'm not sure.
Millions.
Maybe, maybe we could, since putting this, since putting this in the budget doesn't dictate how it's spent, maybe we could have this conversation, you know, at a later point.
We certainly can. We definitely can. We don't have to make a decision on this tonight.
And I think the price of the dog would be a contract I would have to give before council.
Okay. Are there other questions, yes?
Yes, thank you. You mentioned the take-home cars is one of the capital items. Ms. Matthews, I know we've talked some about the cost of those vehicles, the capital cost, but have you included estimate for maintenance and insurance in the budget for those?
For this year or next year, they're mainly replacement vehicles. So there wouldn't be any additional insurance. Perhaps one or two if we keep some of the vehicles. The cost for maintenance, no, that's not taken into consideration. We don't know exactly what that would be.
I believe councilmember Simmons, what you're referring to is not, and I think Mr. Hobbs is answering a different question than what I believe you're asking. If you're referring to just the sort of oil change kind of thing with the vehicle, I think that's one thing. If you're referring to the actual staffing, as the take-home car policy is expanded in Public Works, that's a different issue. Clarify what you mean by maintenance, because those are two separate things.
But that won't occur from down the road.
Yeah. I believe when we originally talked about the expanded take-home car policy with the council, which was a number of months ago, I believe, one of the things that we had flagged for you that is, as more and more cars are added into the fleet, eventually, there will be an inability on the part of the Public Works Department, since they have very limited staff in vehicle maintenance, to perhaps take care of all those cars. That is a cost at some point in the future that we'll need to have further discussions with the Public Works Director about whether that's to hire a staff or to contract out some of the more time-consuming tasks. But we won't be at that point in FY '07.
So the estimates that we have seen on the take-home cars haven't included that nor the increase in insurance?
No, we have not.
Okay. The other question I had was, Ms. Matthews, and I don't know whether you want to do this part of the police budget or when you want to talk about the automated defibrillators?
I would suggest, since that's not in the budget, it's probably an appropriate discussion for reconciliation process.
Thank you. And my last question was if we have talked with the insurance company, liability insurance, about any change in our insurance rates because of accreditation?
That's, in the past, we've received a 10% reduction in the, for the, yes, police liability. It equates to about $4,000 or $5,000 on an annual basis.
Okay.
Typically 10%. And, excuse me, we just recently filled out the forms and alerted them to the fact that we are now an accredited police department and gave them a copy of the letter that Khalia gave to us. So we're all signed, so whoever-
The answer is yes.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all.
Are there any other questions? All right, thank you all very much. We are, we are running a bit behind schedule, and I need to know from the council whether you want to take a break or whether you want to just keep moving along.
We need a break, at least for-
Councilmember Williams is taking a break. Okay, we will take a very short break.
Three minutes is occasion.
Okay. We will take, we will take a three-minute break. Everybody sync your watches, we'll come back in three minutes.[1330.12] We'll come back in three minutes.[131.16]
We'll also automate our bulletin board to the extent that I'm sure you've all seen occasionally a bulletin board that was last week's event. You can tell it, an announcement to expire on midnight of the day of the event and you want to stop advertising and things like that. So that's going to be our biggest purchase. You know, we really haven't bought much over the last couple of years because of construction. And soon as we get in our new room over here, we're going to be able to start cleaning out upstairs and acquiring a few new things to bring us out of the 1970s, really into the new millennium.
Now that we're doing web streaming, we should be a little bit better able to do onsite presentations also.
Yes.
Just a quick comment. I think Granicus is wonderful. I wish my colleagues had voted to do it six months earlier than they did. But the only downside I see to it, and I'm not sure that it's specifically connected to Granicus, it may just be coincidental in time, but I have a feeling it was pushed there a little bit was, I now feel like the meeting minutes are pro forma at best. I used to read them to, you know, make corrections. Now I feel like I don't even need to bother. There's just not much there there. And like I said, that may not be the fault of Granicus, but I know they're hooked into that. And you don't need to respond.
I like them.
I'm fine.
I'm fine. Okay. Anything else on communications? Pleased with the new website, pleased with the web streaming, looking forward to getting some better form of presentation in this room. Councilmember Williams was talking about large screens, large plasma screens on the walls.
Mayor Porter was talking.
Oh, no, I have no idea what those are. You told me what it is. Okay, thank you.
May I say that the clerk's office has borne the brunt of much of the implementation of Granicus. My office does what it always does, which is videotape the meetings. IT got it all plugged in together. But Jesse's office really deserves major credit for that because it is, in essence, a clerk's function. So I want, you know, to say that that's, it's really a legislative management, information management solution in addition to being a cool technology tool. So she really gets a lot of credit for that, and I think it's been a bigger impact on her operation and ours. And, you know, her office gets a lot of calls of people who have been appreciating that ability to get that information like that. And it saves probably a lot of information. So it's a really value-added from that point of view, less the cable. But just one last sentence, which is I'm having fun putting some of the other events on the stream too. We've got the Azalea Awards from last Saturday up there. We've got the pedestrian safety thing from Tuesday night. The affordable housing thing will go up there, both streamlined and archived. So that's the cool part, is that all of our programming is now available to people who are not here.
Yes, actually, I had somebody from the pedestrian safety thing ask how they could get a copy of the tape. I said, "It's on our website probably right now."
Yep.
And they were amazed.
And if I can also add that I look forward to seeing whatever it was in a box for the Sony.
The studio.
Studio in a box.
Yeah, studio in a box. I look forward to some expanded capabilities from that.
Okay. Okay, good. All right. Thank you, Lonnie.
I will be quick. I'm getting hostile looks from Councilmember Elrich, or tired looks, I'm not sure which.
Tired.
I promised the mayor I could probably breeze through whatever is left to breeze through on my part in less than 10 minutes, possibly less. Before we just move on, one thing I just wanted to do before I forget is to follow up on the mayor's questions from earlier, and I apologize, I didn't have this in front of me at the time. The mayor had asked about the reduction in the Legislative Division of General Government. One of the things that is attributing, is causing some of the reduced expense, particularly in the miscellaneous category, actually has to do with elections. If you may recall, when we actually budgeted for the elections in '06, we anticipated, you know, using some of the electronic machines, we had budgeted $20,000. We actually only ended up spending $12,000. And for '07, we only budgeted $3,500 in case there was a chance we might have a special election. So that was the primary change in the Legislative Division. I apologize for not having that in front of me before. The mayor had also asked about the increase in services and charges in the Human Resources Division. Mr. Hobbs was correct, even though he was going off memory. There was about $16,000 included in the budget for buying some type of software to assist the staff with kind of keeping track and doing performance evaluations. The other amount that was also in that same line item has to do with, let's see, some desk audits. And that looked like, Wayne, that's a present cost, not an increase. The only other major change in Human Resources shows up in miscellaneous. Ms. Hampton had included some funding for doing some skills testing, some language testing, and things like that for our employees. So those are the primary changes in General Government. Just very briefly, then we'll move on to the Community Center Fund, but just for the non-departmental. There's almost very little to say about this beyond what's already in the documentation you have. On the surface, the increase from '06 to '07 probably looks somewhat horrifying, and there's a very probably good reason for that. This is where we actually budget the unappropriated reserve and the contingency accounts. And I think the council's, you know, familiar with how those are budgeted. They're a percentage of expenditures essentially. As you may recall, over the course of this fiscal year, the council has approved various transfers from the unappropriated reserve to certain departmental accounts. So when you're trying to compare particularly that line item to '06 to '07, it looks like a very dramatic increase. It's because the money that had previously been in those line items in '06 has actually been, through the budget amendment process, transferred to other departmental budgets. So that's why it looks like there's such a huge increase. The other thing that I just wanted to mention very briefly in terms of non-departmental is the increase in the Equipment Replacement Reserve. One of the things that we have tried to focus on during this fiscal year is to really do sort of a comprehensive look at the city's capital outlay program, make sure that, you know, everything was really accounted for, that met the threshold. And quite candidly, that hasn't always been the case. I think there's been a kind of a lack of understanding on the part of the staff in terms of what constitutes capital, what doesn't. We tried to make sure that everyone had a common understanding and that we captured everything that should be in the CIP in the document itself. For instance, the servers that Mr. Castillo talked about earlier have in the past been treated as more of an operational expense when based on their purchase value, they really do qualify as capital. In part for those type of items, also the expansion of the police take-home car policy. I really feel very strongly that the city needs to be setting more money aside in the Equipment Replacement Reserve, because eventually those assets will need to be replaced. So that is the other thing that you will see in the non-departmental account, is an increase in the Equipment Replacement Reserve. This year, it is $100,000. My proposed budget includes an allocation to the Equipment Replacement Reserve of $300,000. So kind of in a nutshell, that's sort of what the non-departmental budget looks like. Councilmember Siemens had asked, I believe it was on Monday, about the rebate program. I actually have that information for you, Councilmember Siemens, but neglected to bring it down. I will just forward it by email to you all tomorrow.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Are there any other questions about non-departmental?
The, Wayne, can you just remind us about the, what the amount does in the future with the pension supplement?
Keeps going up. Five percent a year.
Is five percent a year the accelerator?
It's over 30 years, and we fade about six years, I guess, until it ends.
So it just gets more painful and more painful?
That's correct.
Believe me, that was the better of the alternatives we had.
I know, but I couldn't remember how painful it got.
I'd like to give you some good news, because we're always upping numbers, but as you know, we switched from IWhiF to Montgomery County Self-Insurance for Workers' Compensation several years back, which saved us money. Last year, our bill was $428,000 for workers' comp. This current, for '07, the bill is going to be $170,800.
Oh, good. That's nice.
Which is a combination of many things. Some of it's because we've had less accidents, experience, and a lot of it is just a better managed fund.
And that lowered number is the one that's in the budget?
Yeah, those numbers are reflected, not in the budget, in any one line item. They're spread through the, the frank benefits of all of the projects.
But you knew that when putting the budget together?
Yes.
There's no little extra help?
No, nobody's.
Didn't just give $300,000.
That makes the number, that makes the budget all the more.
That's about as good as it's getting.
It's like a $300,000 giveaway that got completely absorbed, not ration everything else.
Well, it probably got eaten by health insurance.
Well, more than eaten.
More than eaten, more than $300,000?
We need, yeah, well, I mean, it's offset, but we still need to put $60,000 into the budget to cover the health insurance. We didn't have that.
Can you say a single pair?
Yes, Mel.
Can you just say anything about the training budget? It looks like that's a fairly constant figure.
It's a constant figure, and we pretty much use it at all. I mean, we used it this year for the customer service training, which included yesterday. You all passed the ordinance on that. We use it for other individual courses throughout the year.
And just no particular direction for what is coming next?
No, no. What I can assure you is that we will spend it on training our employees to make them just a little bit better.
I will say, the customer service training recently was excellent and well-received by staff.
Okay. Chris? Just the last thing, and then when we move on to the Community Center Fund and wrap up the evening, is I just wanted to mention, because there had been some discussion about this last year and some concern, has to do with the day labor site. As the council is aware, the property that the site had previously been located on sold, and basically as of February 1st, the site moved to a new location on New Hampshire Avenue. With that change, basically, there's a fairly dramatic decrease in what we're paying on a monthly basis. So what's included in the non-departmental budget is $60,000 for the site's operation. On the revenue side of it, Montgomery County did agree to continue funding 50% of this. Obviously, the long-term solution is to try and find a site more directly in the crossroads area at the intersection of University and New Hampshire. That is obviously a top priority of the Crossroads Commission, which Councilmember Barry and I serve on. I am serving on the Day Labor Committee. Prince George's County has tentatively identified a site that we will be talking about in greater detail at a special meeting to take place next month. You know, it is a very difficult area to try to find, you know, a site to locate anything on, quite frankly. And we see the comments that I made to Prince George's County is that we appreciate their efforts. I also want to make sure, though, that we're not just jumping at a site just because it's available and that we really do need to take into account where the other sites are in Montgomery County, so we're just not all spending money and not really solving the issues and not meeting the needs of the workers. I have had some discussions with the county executive's office in Montgomery County that my hope would be that even if the site is in Prince George's County, that they continue to focus on the fact that it does cross jurisdictional boundaries and that since they have made a commitment to the funding of the site in Tacoma Park, that that funding will continue once a more permanent site is found. Having said that, I also had a discussion with Prince George's County, which has, to date, really focused on the need for a site in Prince George's. And I guess my cautionary note to both jurisdictions is let's focus on solving the issue and not get too tied up into where it's located, on whose side of the border, that we all just need to kind of continue working together. In light of the council's comments last year, I have also kind of made the statement to both the subcommittee that I serve on, as well as to both jurisdictions, you know, that Tacoma Park has really sort of taken the lead and spent a considerable amount of money on its own funds, you know, trying to help solve some of the problems, and that we really are looking to both counties to take a much larger role. So certainly keep you updated as, you know, those discussions move forward. With that, we'll kind of close out the evening with the Community Center Fund. I have everyone to kind of turn to that page in their budget binder, and there's also a memo included in the agenda packet. Given the lateness of the hour, and I don't want to belabor this, as I share with the mayor, is just touch on a few key points about what's in the budget binder itself and in the memo. As has been, was the case last year when we sat here and talked about this fund, projecting out expenditures for the current fiscal year was very difficult. The council is aware that there are still a number of outstanding issues related to Phase 1. And in terms of projecting expenditures for '06, truthfully, it was really my best guess in terms of where we may end up the year. At this point, you know, we're about 30 days or six weeks away from the end of the fiscal year. We have a mediation session on Monday for a small portion of the proposed change orders for James F. Knott that are still outstanding. So even if that mediation, which I'm not entirely confident it will, but even if that mediation resolves that small handful of issues, there's still a number of issues with James F. Knott that are still pending. As I had told the council earlier this fiscal year, I do anticipate that, once I have a clear sense of where we might end up, that in all likelihood, I would be bringing a budget amendment for the Community Center Fund before you at some point prior to the end of the fiscal year. And I think you can look forward to seeing that in June. It wasn't a matter of waiting to the last minute, but really just trying to get a better sense of where we're going to end up. So that's probably the only comment I'll make about the projections. It was very difficult. Truthfully, I probably bored the heck out of Suzanne, making her look at various calculations, probably dragged Ms. Brooks into the same thing, and finally just decided all I could do was take my best guess and hope that some of it sorted out. So that's one area that you probably will see a budget amendment on. In terms of '07, and we had some brief discussion about this, I believe it was either this past Monday, or I think it may have been the previous week during the public hearing in response to Mr. Thery's question, and just wanted to make sure that the council was clear in terms of what's in the budget right now and some further discussions that need to take place as we move forward in finishing up this budget for next year. If you look at the revenue section, there is $435,575 that is included as a revenue that basically represents the FY '07 Program Open Space Funds that the council earlier this year by resolution indicated that you wanted to, or had a desire to expend towards the proposed construction of a gymnasium. As a reminder, Program Open Space Funds are basically handled on a reimbursement basis, so unless the city first spends the money, it cannot seek reimbursement. You know, whether or not we would actually expend that full amount during the fiscal year, I think remains to be seen, and obviously, the council will need to have further discussions about where you intend to go with the gym project.
And that has a 25% match that you spend first.
Right. And that's. Do you need to go through the Board of Public Works?
Yes, it does.
Everything related to the, but we hope to receive state funds for, needs to go to the Board of Public Works before we start spending our own money for that.
The 25% match that Suzanne just mentioned basically shows up, if you look below under other financing sources, you'll see a number of $145,192. That's basically an operating transfer in from the general fund, which would essentially service the match that Suzanne's referring to. Obviously, there's a number of different sources that we have talked about for the gym, and I think the council, not certainly this evening, given that it's already after 11 o'clock, but before this budget is done, may want to have some further discussions about the various funding sources that are available, some timing issues associated with each of them, and provide some further direction to staff. In terms of actual expenditures for the Community Center Fund for '07, as I just mentioned, we assume that the full amount of Program Open Space Funds for '07 would be expended as well as the city's required match. The only other item that is anticipated from an expenditure standpoint at this juncture is basically the purchase and installation of an interior signage system, which is about $35,000. This has been carried on the financial reports that have, you know, come before you for some time. Truthfully, some of it's been a matter of staff time just in terms of putting the finishing touches so that those specifications can be issued. And truthfully, we wanted to get a better sense of sort of how traffic is flowing through the building, you know, making sure that signage was basically designed and put where it needed to be to most help customers get through this facility. Kind of referring just quickly back to the memo, and we'll just kind of, Suzanne just probably touched on most of this, but the Program Open Space, I just talked about, as Suzanne indicated, it will have to be approved by the Board of Public Works prior to the actual expenditure of any fund, and the Board of Public Works will not review any applications until after fiscal year '07 begins. So the first opportunity that the Board of Public Works would even consider reviewing anything is probably, I think they meet on a monthly basis, I believe.
They meet every couple of weeks, but it would be in July, if we could get on there in general.
Right. Council's also aware that we've been awarded $360,000 in state bond bill monies for '07. These require an equal match. Suzanne can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that match can come from a variety of sources. It doesn't necessarily have to be just city operating funds.
It just can't be state funds.
All right. Like the Program Open Space money, any state bond bill monies are basically handled on a reimbursement basis. Since we haven't had an opportunity, and the council has made some definitive decisions about the gym, obviously pending the results of a feasibility study, I did not include the state bond bill funds in this budget. That's not an indication that I think we are not going to spend them, it's just at some point, you have to make an assumption in terms of how much will be expended. Certainly, if the gym project were to move along more quickly, the budget could be amended at any time. But basically, it's just a matter of what money I realistically thought we might expend and when reimbursement would occur.
And again, this does require an equal match that has to be allocated, that has to be identified before you take it to the Board of Public Works for use. And this is an area that the county council has expressed interest in helping us with and has talked in committee of giving the city $240,000 in FY '07 and recommending $120,000 in FY '08 as the match for that $360,000.
Do we have any sense of when that decision's going to be made?
I think it's, it's either this week or next week.
Oh.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know the date. Maybe Tuesday.
I got, I got a little lost in that. You say that it is ma, that we have to match the funds?
Yes.
Okay, that's for the county?
No, the county, the argument from the county and their offer, which is very nice, is that they come up with the equal match, the $360,000, that would match the state bond bill award of $360,000, so that it doesn't come out of our cash.
Tacoma Park budget.
That's correct. And as I understand it, however, if the city intends to use the county funds as a match for any of the state program funds, and basically, those funds could not be expended until the whole project went before the Board of Public Works.
Right. And the other aspect that we will need to work with the county very closely on is they tend to be more sticklers about when you spend their money and their processes. And so while the $360,000 from the state bond bill does not necessarily have to be spent in FY '07, the $240,000 from the county might, unless we are careful in how we work with the contract to give us some flexibility in case that doesn't happen to take place. So one of the things here is, is a very careful sense of timing and what we commit ourselves in making sure that we don't commit ourselves to something and then decide either the timing is wrong or we're not ready, otherwise ready to do something, and then have to repay somebody the money.
I'm going to suggest that we continue this discussion probably, I don't think we have time next Monday, but perhaps next Thursday, because I don't think that this is going to result in anything on the reconciliation list.
No.
But before we do that, I'd just like to ask one question, which is, how does the decisions on the elevator fit into all of this? Are you planning to put those into the Community Center Fund?
Right. That's, I think we have tried to use the Community Center Fund to capture any costs associated with the project. It's a very good question, Mayor, thank you for bringing that up. It's basically as we go through the next week or so trying to finalize this budget, you know, assuming the council next week says you're comfortable, at least for the assumption in terms of the Program Open Space Funds, what you would see is an adjustment in the expenditures for '07, should reflect because of the elevator cab installation and an increase in all likelihood in the operating transfer from the general fund.
Okay. Karen?
Yeah, forgetting about any possible work on, additional work on the Community Center, such as the gymnasium, just to try to wrap up what we've done, are those estimates in this FY '06 budget, when you're looking at the expenditures? Have you taken your usual conservative estimate on the outstanding change orders?
What I tried to do is, if you recall, Councilmember Siemens, with some of the financial reports, is there's a fairly wide variance between what James F. Knott believes it is owed for some of the proposed change orders and what the city believes we are owed, or we are, they are entitled to. These numbers, and quite candidly, I do need to refine them, you know, as we've been able to wrap up some, some other issues with other parties involved in the project. I'm going to go back and revisit them. I think it's a fairly good guess. The one thing I will just mention briefly, as the council is aware, probably at the last financial report, I had mentioned that I had some concerns about some invoices submitted by the project architect in terms of the level of detail, and basically had been holding up payment for a considerable period of time pending my getting the information I requested or if I didn't get it, making some determination, working with our legal counsel, Mr. Cox, in terms of what was fair. At this juncture, from my perspective anyway, those issues have been resolved. I processed this week the last payment on those invoices, and quite candidly, I think, you know, as we always do, try to be, you know, fair, but I did need to have a sense of comfort that the expenditures were documented at a level that I was comfortable with. In those instances where they were not, they did not receive full payment. And basically, my approach in the letter that I sent to Mr. Abel was that, quite candidly, that this is what we believe is reasonable and fair. If you cash the check, the issue's settled. To date, they have cashed the check. So I would like to go back and revisit those numbers at the time. Obviously, the budget process takes a while, and you need to get your estimates done ahead of time. I would like to go back prior to next week, when you have an opportunity to talk about this further, and revisit those calculations. But kind of a long answer to a short question, to the best of my knowledge, or to Councilmember Siemens, I think the numbers are fairly reasonable. I do think that the operating transfer amount may go down because of some of the issues I just talked about.
Thank you.
With that, like I say, we just wanted to just make sure that you had a sense of the Community Center Fund. The only other thing I would just note is that I did have a discussion via email, I guess, with Jerry Stocks from Washington Adventure, just to clarify kind of how those funds would be used, and truthfully, to get, you know, at least something a little bit more formal in terms of their pledge for the gymnasium project. As the memo indicates, their intention is to begin making those annual payments once we're actually in a position to have a groundbreaking. Suzanne and I will be meeting with Mr. Stocks, I believe, at some time next week to maybe talk about this a little further and actually talk about the structure of a more formal agreement in terms of that funding.
One additional thing, we have a budget, we have several discussions related to the budget on Monday. The last one is reconciliation. I think it's important on that one that we get everything that we want to consider in reconciliation out on the table by Monday so that the staff can do some work prior to the final budget discussion that we have scheduled for next Thursday.
Could you send us a list of what you have on there?
I can, I can sit down and coordinate with the city clerk and make sure that we both have the same list, that I can send it out, yes.
Right. Thank you.
And certainly, if you have any things that cross your mind prior to Monday evening, you know, as I said throughout this process, sooner you can just send us an email if there's any costing out that needs to happen. We obviously want to make this process as efficient for you all as we can, and, you know, you have busy lives. So any information you can give us in advance would be very helpful in terms of moving the process along for your own sake, if not for staff's.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing else, we're adjourned. Thank you. Appreciate everybody staying so late.